Very good, thank you. Buenos dias, todos bienvenidos a la sesión.
Good morning, everybody.
Buenos dias a todos.
Good morning again and welcome to City Hall and a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Friday.
Buenos dias.
We have not achieved a quorum yet. There's a Board of Referring Powers meeting taking place behind council chambers. Several members are still finishing business there. So before we begin with the council agenda for today, as is customary for Fridays, we'll begin with a series of presentations and special acknowledgements. And I'd like to call first upon Councilmember Mr. Kowski for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a fitting way to start our day. We had a reception this morning for council staff, council members, city clerk staff, and support staff who worked with us all year long in terms of celebrating the holidays. And we had a little entertainment there, and we've invited them to come and perhaps start our council session with some entertainment. I'd like to introduce and have sing for us the University High School Chorus, University High School L.A. USD School in West Los Angeles. They are led by their chorus choir director, Mr. G., and I think we will start with some songs from them. So if I can ask him to come forward, maybe stand in the front here and face the audience, I think it's a great way to start our session.
You know that you're a dancer and a dancer and a blizzard. Comet and Cupid and Donna and Blitzen. But do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer had a very shiny nose. And if you ever saw him, you would even say it glows. All the other reindeers used to laugh and call him vain. They never let poor Rudolph join any reindeer games. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to stay. Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeers loved him as they shouted out with glee. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, you'll learn his story. Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to stay. Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeers loved him as they shouted out with glee. Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer, you'll learn his story. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad, prospero año y felicidad. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas, I wanna wish you a merry Christmas. I wanna wish you a merry Christmas from the bottom of my heart. Thank you all so much. That's the end of our performance. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you all for inviting us over. We'd love to see you again sometime in the near future. And on behalf of all of the administration staff at the University High School and my colleagues as well, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. G., and students from University High School. I think it's a very fitting way to begin our session, particularly today when we are celebrating Los Angeles Music Week. And you're gonna be hearing a lot of other presentations given today to famous music performers who have been making L.A. their home for many, many years. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Mr. Kowski. The chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, would you please join me in welcoming to the podium our dear friend, Dr. Jane Pizzano.
Thank you very much.
You would want to know that on November the first, Dr. Pizzano began her tenure as the president and director of the Natural History Museum of Los Angeles County, located in our own exposition park. Prior to being named director and president, she served as the University of Southern California Senior Vice President for External Relations, where she played an instrumental role, a pivotal role, in having USC named Time College of the Year in 2000. According to Time Magazine, and I quote, "USC's may be the most ambitious social outreach program of any private university in the nation. Much of that is attributable to the stellar work by Jane Pizzano." Programs established there, like USC's Family of Five School, are now being emulated by other urban universities across the nation. She helped to improve the quality of life for many and for those innovative efforts. We are all better and indeed most grateful. I was pleased to work with Jane while she was at USC, and I'm thrilled, absolutely thrilled, that I'll be able to continue to work with her in the greater Exposition University Park community, where millions of childrens and families are served across the region. The Natural History Museum is truly one of our cities, one of our counties, one of our regions' great treasures. Many don't realize that the Natural History Museum of Los Angeles includes the Natural History Museum in Exposition Park, the Page Museum, the La Brea Tar Pits, and the William S. Hart Museum and Ranch in New Hall. Founded in 1913, it's one of the preeminent natural history and cultural history museums in the United States with, get this, over 33 million specimens and artifacts in its collection. And I'm told that Dr. Pizzano now knows them all by name. Under the leadership of Jane Pizzano, the museum is about to launch a new phase. A great new phase, and like so many of our great cultural and educational institutions, including the zoo, the Museum of Contemporary Art, and the neighboring institution, the California Science Center, this Natural History Museum has announced an ambitious, and I do mean ambitious, expansion and renovation plan. And it's a multi-million dollar effort. We'll hear more about it, and I trust that Dr. Pizzano will make reference to. I'm confident that she's up to the challenge, and so it's on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, Jane, that we take this opportunity to present you, to welcome you, to congratulate you, to pledge our support to you. Dr. Pizzano is trained as a scholar in international relations undergrad from Stanford, Ph.D. from Johns Hopkins, and has gone on to do great work at USC and elsewhere in academic life to make her mark known. She's already left her footprints, some would say in the sands of time, but she is not done. And so we take this opportunity on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council to congratulate you on your recent appointment as president and director of the Natural History Museum of Los Angeles County. We're all pleased to recognize your valuable contributions to the Exposition Park community and well beyond. And we extend to you our very best for continued success in that new position. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
I would like to join my colleague, Mr. Ridley Thomas, in recognizing Dr. Pizzano because she is one of the rare people that we have here in Los Angeles who are academics and yet also visionaries for the future of this region. And even though she is leaving the academy for the Natural History Museum, I have every expectation that she will continue her efforts to think about the future of this region and to continue to be such an eloquent spokesperson for a greater Los Angeles, for a great Los Angeles, for one Los Angeles. And I have no doubt that you will continue in your academic endeavors, to continue to speak out publicly, continue to write op-eds, and continue to educate all of us about the future of this great city. Congratulations to you, Dr.
Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, I too wanted to add my congratulations to Jane Pizzano. I've known her for a long time. I'm a graduate of the University of Southern California, and I'm so pleased that she will still be part of the community, bringing her exceptional talents to the museum, and I look forward to working with you in the future, Jane.
Mr. Labange.
The audience today, one of the great things about Jane Pizzano is she lives in 35th District Number One. Let me give a hand to our great firefighters there in Los Feliz, but also, she brought forth a great plan 20 years ago when this city celebrated its bicentennial on the 200th anniversary of the founding of the great capital of Los Angeles by many, many great events that we should continue to do. And now it's only great that she's working very hard at Exposition Park and the great museum to bring all Angelinos to the southwest border of the original capital of Los Angeles. That stone marks it right there, which you did. I just want to congratulate you, Jade, and I'm so proud of what you have done and what will you continue to do. And thank you, councilmen, for bringing Jane here to the chambers. Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco.
Council president, colleagues, I just want to commend Dr. Jane Pizzano for being such a good neighbor of Boa Heights. She serves as part of USC's, or was serving as part of USC's dean team. And we have always asked all of our hospitals and all of our universities to be good neighbors. And Dr. Jane met with me when I first started and made a strong commitment, hired a local person to work with the community. So I want to commend you for starting that process between USC and the community of Boa Heights. Thank you.
Ms. Mr. Kowski.
I think it's unanimous. Jane is a neighbor to the whole city. And I remember in the last decade that Jane was part of a blueprint for the year 2000, looking ahead. It was started in the early '90s to say where and how the city should become, a city for the 21st century. Not just in telecommunications, but in major social issues and major issues that we're now dealing with because it predicted exactly where we would be if we didn't deal with it, in the issues such as housing and some of those other areas. And I think visionary is, I think Jane's middle name, because that's what she's done all along. And it's gonna be wonderful having her still here, contributing in yet another way to our city.
Other members? Ms. Pizzano.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ridley Thomas, and all the other council members who spoke. Actually, I feel like I've been in Los Angeles a very long time when I hear about the bicentennial and L.A. 2000 and USC and now the Natural History Museum. I'm very pleased and proud to have had a good partnership with Councilwoman Ridley Thomas. The Exposition Park area is just wonderful and flowering. I invite you all to come and to be part of it and watch the Natural History Museum grow and become the preeminent natural history museum in the world. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council, there's a fellow in the audience by the name of Mark Pizzano. And if I can get a beam on him, where are you, Mark? Stand and take a bow. Mark Pizzano, the other half of the Pizzano family, the executive director of SCAG. We know you and we appreciate your work. Mr. President, members, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley Thomas. Colleagues, before proceeding with additional presentations, we have quite a number today. There is the Board of Referring Powers matter that needs to be acted upon. Mr. Clerk, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Attorney, the Board of Referring Powers item.
Yes, the Board of Referring Powers met this morning and had a public meeting. And then they had a closed session meeting. Now they need to come out and meet in public and make their decision.
Those members are here. Ms. Galanter.
Calling the roll, right? Is that right?
The roll call is Burnson, Galanter, Pacheco, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas. But Mr. Labange sat in for Mr. Burnson today. Four members were present.
So do you need us to go back up there and do the...
Please.
Members of the Board of Referring Powers, please proceed to the center table. For all the members of the audience, I want you to know just how special today is. What you're about to witness takes place once every two years.
Zizan, some of you were here earlier when the Board of Referring Powers was meeting at this table. And we adjourned to executive session across the hall in order to allow the council meeting to get started. We're required to take our vote on the matter in public, and so we have to come back here to do that. And so please pardon the interruption, but we need to get this over with. We have one item before us, which is the motion to approve the proposed settlement. I believe Mr. Labange made the motion and Mr. Reyes, the other way, Mr. Reyes made the motion, Mr. Labange seconded the motion. And we have the clerk to call the roll. You want to do that?
Commander.
Aye.
Reyes, Pacheco, Labange. Three to one.
Three to one. All right, thank you. That adjourns the meeting of the Board of Referring Powers, and thank you all for your indulgence.
Thank you very much. And I do believe we have a quorum now for a meeting of the city council. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Burnson, Galanter, Garcia, Han, Holman, Labange, Ms. Kowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Sina, Padilla. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President. Okay, so colleagues, you all know we have quite an agenda before us today, and we are currently in the presentations portion of the agenda. We've had two presentations conducted already. I believe we have a total of about 25 before we get to the meeting of the council. And that would include the Music Week presentation. So just want to make sure we're all on the same page here and ask for your brevity and focus. While Ms. Galanter still has a voice, would you like to be the next presenter?
Thank you, Mr. President. I console myself that at least this time I know my voice will get better. I actually have two presentations, one in conjunction with Music Week, and then one, if you don't mind, I'll do the other one at the same time. I'd like to ask Shirley Massey to join me. Good morning. I'll try not to breathe. I'll try not to breathe on you, and I apologize for not being able to do this with a little more flair, but I did want to have the opportunity to come and do this in person. Shirley Massey, excuse me, was born and raised in Houston, Texas. She's the younger of two girls, and her real name is actually Violet Charlene Massey. You should never give that up, that's a really nice name. At the age of five, she accepted Christ as her personal Savior, and during that same year, she began studying classical piano and learned to play gospel music in the church. She graduated from Yates High School with highest honors, moved to Washington DC to attend Howard University, and graduated receiving a bachelor's degree in business with cum laude honors. Then she moved to Los Angeles, where we are happy to say she still resides. For many years, she worked in business until she began to feel the call of God upon her life to work in the ministry of music, and we are, many of us, very glad that you did. I'm sure God is too, but many of us just around here are glad that you did. She mentored about, she was mentored for about five years by Mr. Charles Johnson, the Director of the St. Brigid Gospel Choir, where she served as the choir accompanist. She then went to the Dick Grove School of Music and received extensive instruction in keyboard composing and arranging. So her music career continues in the Los Angeles and Orange County area, but she has traveled as far as Sweden to play with the Los Angeles Symphony Orchestra, and she's accompanied a number of gospel artists, including Darryl Coley, and served with, in various musical capacities, including Minister of Music. And she's also done missionary work in Africa, and so it is my very great pleasure to recognize you, Ms. Massey, and congratulate you for the honor bestowed upon you by the Los Angeles Music Week, and to join in saying thank you for using your extraordinary talent for the benefit of so many people throughout the world.
I would like to thank you very much for everyone who has given me this honor. Truly, this is a highlight in my life, and I pray that God will give me many more. Thank you for each one of you.
If I may, this is a totally different one. I'd like to ask my wonderful student intern, Sam Haythorne, to come up here. Sam has been working in my office for a number of months now. He works quietly and efficiently, gets a lot of things done. We almost never hear from him. He doesn't jump in and say, hey, look at me, but he just churns out the work that we've asked him to do, and we are very, very proud of what he's been able to accomplish. He's a student at USC in the Political Science Department, and I hope this experience has not discouraged you. He graduated from Westchester High School in my district. For, in my office, he's worked on our airport mailing list, which is now quite extensive, helped us with keeping track of the pending aviation bills in Congress, and done a number of tasks related to helping us understand what all those bills are. You will notice that coming through the council is a motion regarding several of those bills. But all good things come to an end, and sometimes some bad things come to an end too. And Sam, who is one of the good things, has gone back to school and will be leaving my office, so I wanted to say again, thank you so much for your hard work. It's been really nice having you around. Come back anytime, we have plenty of work left. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everyone for this great opportunity to get a closer look at politics. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. Colleagues, as we proceed with the presentations, we'll be doing all the Music Week presentations in order at the end or at the conclusion of the other presentation. So I'd like to call upon next, Mr. Reyes.
Council President, members of the council, today I have two presentations, all of which I can assure you are very special, and once I get to each of them, I can, I certainly will agree. First, I wanted to introduce to all of you El Esencia de Oscar Benavides Gutierrez, General Counsel of El Salvador, who in January will be transferring to the city of Dallas, Texas, and become the new General Counsel of that city with jurisdiction in the states of Kansas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, and the region of Texas. Mr. Benavides has been the Consul General for the city of Los Angeles for the past four years. The office of the General Counsel of El Salvador in the city of Los Angeles is the main consulate of El Salvador in the world. As you may know, in Los Angeles reside the largest number of Salvadorians outside of El Salvador, estimated at over 1 million persons. Now that the general council is being transferred to Texas, the city council of the city of Los Angeles wants to recognize the work of El Esencia de Benavides Gutierrez on behalf of the Salvadoran community of Los Angeles. We want to wish he and to his wife, Ana Josefina Lopez, ladies and here with us, the best in their new appointment. Also, we would like to recognize the President of the General Counsel of Guatemala, Fernando Castillo, who is also with us. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Benavides to address the council if he wishes.
Señor President, señores concejales, realmente es un verdadero honor, un gran privilegio, estar aquí en esta casa del gobierno de Los Ángeles. Hace 32 años, cuando vine a estudiar aquí, 1968, nunca imaginé que iba a tener este gran honor de estar en esta casa. Yo quiero, en nombre del casi un millón de salvadoreños que residen aquí en Los Ángeles, recibir este reconocimiento de la ciudad. Gracias, que Dios bendiga América, que Dios bendiga a Los Ángeles.
Hey, we have one more.
One more.
Council President, members of the council, with me here today is Miguel Contreras, Executive Secretary-Treasurer of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO. Colleagues, in the short time that many of us have been here, I have been impressed with the fact that we, as a council, have been looking at ways that we can support our working families. We've talked about a high housing crisis, we've talked about the methods of supporting those working people that have been impacted by the September 11th attack, and a number of other issues that are related to this thing. And this reason, for this reason, I've invited Miguel here today, because I wanted to publicly acknowledge that effort that we have, that he is our partner. As a supporter of labor, I can tell you that I've known this for a long time, as have many of you. Because when we talk about things like affordable housing, our reality is that many of the people living in Los Angeles would still have problems paying their rent. And it's because of the wages that they earn. In the past years, the council has recognized that low wages are a problem. That's why this body created something called the Living Wage Ordinance, because as a body we realized that something had to be done. Earlier this month, the AFL-CIO, the National Federation, recognized that something is being done, and that is that Los Angeles is becoming a better place for working families. And in doing so, the National Federation officially named Los Angeles a union city. And much of that credit has to go to Miguel Contreras and his organizing efforts of the workers of Los Angeles, because it was Miguel who has had that vision for the people of Los Angeles. And so I wanted to take this time today to recognize Miguel, but more importantly, that the fact that Los Angeles is now a union city.
I want to thank the Councilman Reyes for this acknowledgement of our award. The award is here, was presented to the LA Federation of Labor last week at the AFL-CIO convention in Las Vegas. Out of 650 central bodies in the country, we're awarded a top union city here in the United States. A lot of that is our affiliate's work that's been done in the city and county of Los Angeles in the last 24 months, organizing over 120,000 workers into the AFL-CIO. Last year, supporting the strikes of the janitors, of the screen actors, and the transit worker strike, the idea that we put a union army of over 3,000 on the streets to hit on our political campaigns. So very pleased to be acknowledged today by the city council, a chamber who we do a lot of business with. In the last few years here, helping establish the Living Wage Ordinance, the Worker Retention Ordinance, the Responsible Contractors Ordinance, and other efforts that we work together with the city to ensure that California and Los Angeles in particular provides a decent standard of living for the people and the residents in this city. So once again, Councilman Reyes, I want to thank you for your acknowledgement here of the LA County Federation of Labor, and that LA has been deemed by the AFL-CIO to be a union city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and congratulations to the Federation. Chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for a presentation.
I can invite our firefighters and everybody else who's here in relation to the Palomar incident to please come forward. Thank you, Mr. President. It's the most horrible duty we have as council members, and we've all had those days where you get a call early in the morning to hear of some tragedy, a shooting in your district, or in this case, a fire at the Palomar Hotel. This has special relevance right now. Every single day, there are tragedies, there are potential tragedies in this city, that our firefighters and our communities come together to help fight. I just was informed that there's been an explosion of Wilcox and Yucca in Hollywood, and right now I know that we have to get these firefighters out of here to make sure that they can go do their jobs, but this is something they do every single day. This tragic fire that many of you know about in Hollywood happened right near the corner of Santa Monica and Western Boulevard. They took the life of two individuals and injured four civilians and three firefighters. Today, we are honoring all of those who helped the victims of the Palomar Hotel fire during this time of crisis. First and foremost, I want to honor the men and women of the Los Angeles Fire Department in responding to this call. I was on the scene with them early in the morning, and it was through their heroics that many, many lives were saved. In particular, the members of Engine Company 52, Task Force 35, Rescue 826, and Battalion Five are being honored. On responding to the call at 3:41 a.m., and today ironically is the day that there are arrangements for arson in this case, these firefighters encountered a building full of frantic residents ablaze with fire showing on all sides. The intensity of the fire, combined with the loss of some of the building's life safety systems, made the threat of life loss and injury to the occupants greater than the fire the fire department had seen in any time. The actions that our firefighters took that day put their own lives at extreme risk, above and beyond the calculated risk of simple fire service. Their bravery and heroism saved the lives of nearly all the Palomar's residents. In particular, the rescue of two small children in the hands of their mother, who was handing her children through a fourth-story window, was truly extraordinary. Captain Bob McMaster, firefighter Jose Cardona, and firefighter Tom Jaramillo put themselves in grave danger, climbing to the top of a fully extended 35-foot ladder to rescue the children from the arms of their mother. Their actions were recounted in LA Times, you saw it on the news. And Mr. Galindo, the husband of the woman who handed their children to safety and perished in that fire, gave me a call on Thanksgiving at my house, and he said, in tears, "Thank you, all of you in the city, for saving my children," and he was thanking all of you. Also of note was the performance of Captain Philip Flegel, who was responsible in saving the lives of two of his firefighters, both of who suffered burns and injuries that required hospitalization. So first, to the firefighters, I'd like to present first certificates to Engine Company 52. If I can ask Captain Flegel to accept. Task Force 35, Captain McMaster will be accepting. Rescue 826, firefighter Jose Cardona will be accepting. And Battalion Five, the Battalion Chief Roger Gillis will be accepting. Let's give a hand to all the firefighters. The Red Cross, as always, was there from the first moment of the crisis. They comforted the victims, coordinated shelter, food, clothing, and counseling. This was really a community coming together at short notice. They assisted the victims in finding new homes as well for relocation. And I'd like to present Gil Smith and Kevin Lesher certificate to the Red Cross for their Also, the Lemon Grove Recreation Center facility of our own Wreckin' Parks Department served as the first emergency shelter location for the victims of the Palomar fire. The director, Art Chavez, was very welcoming and forthcoming with assistance in a time of need, and today we actually have Ellie Oppenheim here to accept on behalf of the Wreckin' Parks Department. Virgil Middle School was a second shelter for the fires' victims. The school served as a shelter for over a week, and I know this was no small inconvenience to them. When we talk about schools and the city sharing facilities, this was an extraordinary act of them. I'd like to thank all the teachers, the students, the parents, and also Principal Jerry Durham for her cooperation, generosity, and opening up her school to the community in need. And Paramount Studios, always a friend of Hollywood, reached out in this crisis with a generous donation of food for the displaced residents. The morning of the fire, made a request to Earl Letts, the president of Paramount, the donation. He stepped up and said, "We'll do whatever we can," and Chris Estle, the vice president of Paramount, is here as well. And I also want to just recognize the InterCity Law Center for the work that they did in helping people out new homes. This was really an extraordinary example, not only of bravery right here in our city, but of a community coming together. Thank you all. Mr. Galindo, thank you all from the city for all of your service.
Before you all go, before you all go, the chair recognizes Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Garcetti, thank you very much. I'd just like to ask for the council's benefits and public benefits. Captain McMaster, I know you were the first truck company there. Could you just take a minute and describe that for us? I know I caught you off guard here, but I know you're.
Thank you, Councilman Labange. It was a fire that most firefighters that have been around for some time haven't seen because of ordinances, sprinkling ordinances, and various safety ordinances that we have in our apartment buildings now. It was just a very intense fire. We knew it right from the very get-go, and everybody performed very admirably.
And your truck, though, was right in the position there where you were actually involved in the rescue personally.
Yes, sir.
Could you just describe that just for a minute, because I know I heard it from your firefighters, and I think it'd be important for the members and others to hear.
We, when we arrived on scene, shortly after we arrived on scene, we noticed that Norma Galindo and her two small children were in a fourth-floor window, and we took our ground ladders, which are 35 feet, and we put them up under the window, or close to being up under the window, and climbed, rescued the children through the heroics of their mother, Norma Galindo.
Thank you very much. I just, every day throughout the city of Los Angeles, there's firefighters and others, but firefighters and others serving the great city and the people, and when the alarm sounds, you're there for all of us, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation. The chair recognizes Mr. Holden for a presentation.
As president members, as you know, this is Music Week, and some of those presentations have already been made. But I just want to take this opportunity, before I make my presentation, to a very famous person in the field of music to thanks once again, Ms. Margie Evans, for all that she has done over the past eight years. Remind us annually, she be every day, who's contributing to our good feelings in the city of Los Angeles by their performing and the music industry. And so we have one young person here, standing next to me. His name is Mr. Marle Young. You might not know that much about him, but you know about his work. It gives me great pleasure, of course, to introduce you to a man whose name you may not recognize yet. He was a true pioneer in the entertainment industry. All of you know the name Lucille Ball, the famous comedian. The man who was musical director of a TV show is with us today. Mr. Young. He's our guest for the 10th district. Mr. Young started out in Chicago, and as a young boy, his music training was classical piano, but he was also drawn close to jazz, and we liked both. And also, as a young man, he journeyed west, completed a bachelor of arts degree at UCLA, ZEWE would like that, and continued a musical career that included arranging and composing. Like all African-American musicians at that time, he played the jazz clubs of Central Avenue. We're all known musicians like Jimmy Weatherspoon. We honored him here doing Music Week once, and he's no longer with us, but he was really an outstanding musician as well. And Paul Robeson, you all heard of that guy, and he had a great voice, had the good fortune to work with Marle, Mr. Marle Young. Here in Los Angeles, Mr. Young was instrumental in breaking down the barriers that kept the black and white musician unions from merging. There was a time, believe it or not, that that happened. In 1958, he got what? He got what he called "the break of his life." That was when he played the piano for a singer who was trying out for the Lucille Ball workshop. From there, he was asked to stay on after a number of years and was asked to be music director for Lucille Ball Television Show. He stayed with the show until it went off the air in 1974. Mr. Young's civic career has been illustrious as his professional careers. Along with being very active with the musician union, he served on the NAACP board. He has been on the City Cultural Affairs Commission. Governor Brown appointed him to the California Arts Council. Mr. Young has also been a volunteer tutoring, helping students with reading and math. His life has been full, and we are proud to have him with us today. Please welcome once again, Mr. Marle Young, as I represent the 10th district in the field of music. He's a tall guy, too. Something's got to be done with this podium, it just... Thank you for allowing me to be up here before the council today, and I'm really honored to be part of Music Week. Being a member of the musicians' union, we're glad to have a period seven society to celebrate music as one of the cultural and most important arts in the city of Los Angeles. I appeared here some years ago when I had to get confirmation to become a member of the Cultural Affairs Commission. And so I'm really honored today to become a member that is being honored for Music Week. And I want to thank every member of the council for allowing me to appear today. Thank you very much. The other honoree for the 10th district for Music Week, we all know him so well. He couldn't be with us today because he's in a tour outside of the country. It would be Mr. Ray Charles. Hi, Mr. Ray Charles, of course, has a long illustrious career in the field of music. Born in Albany, Georgia, in 1930. He's a Georgia boy, and I'm a Georgia boy, too. And quite as kept, Mr. Charles was able to see, until he was aged seven years old, when he had an illness and lost his sight. But he's in all of the halls of fame. Rhythm and Blues Hall of Fame, the Jazz Hall of Fame, Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and has a dozen Grammys added to his name. He's sorry he can't be here with us today, but be assured that he said, when he's back in time, he will once again come to visit us here at City Hall. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, let's give Mr. Ray Charles a round of applause, even though he's not here, but he will be joining us. There's a guy named John Hahn. That's Janice's uncle, and very active in the American Legion. And each year, he would come to the county hall of administration to bring the National Commander. And when I got elected to the city council, then he would ask me for the past 14 years to introduce each year the National Commander to the city council and the people of Los Angeles as well. And today, we have with us a man who's been very active in the military environment, Richard J. Santos. Mr. Richard Santos is deserving of the highest commendation from the Los Angeles City Council for his being elected National Commander of the 2.8 million American Legions during the 83rd National Convention of the nation's largest veteran organization. Mr. Santos, also known as Rick, became a member of the American Legion in July 1967 after receiving an honorable discharge with the United States Naval Reserve that same year. Upon his return to civilian life, he began a 31-year career as an insurance claims representative. You get the numbers right. Specializing in the investigation and adjustments of property insurance and catastrophe claims. Mr. Rick Santos continued to serve his career, and his fellow veterans are volunteering to serve in many key-level positions in the American Legion, including chairman, or members of committees and commissions for the post to the department level. He has served on the Veteran Affairs and Rehabilitation Commission, Citizen Flag Alliance, Policy Coordination and Action Groups, Veteran Planning and Coordinating Committees, and Legislative Committees, and as the National Commander, any liaison to the V and AR Commission, and the Chairman of the Public Relations Commission. He's just been chairman of almost everything, the nicest commander and the most deserving. Rick Santos has been married since 1968 to his former Linda Lee Perry. Jan Perry, you hear that? And they are the parents of one daughter, Betsy Lee, and two sons, Lee and Stefan. He's been declared an honorary life member of the Green Belt Post Number 136 in Greenbelt, Maryland, where he resides. And Mr. Santos is a recipient of the gubernatorial appointments as commissions on the Maryland Veterans Commission and the Maryland Military Monument Commission. Now therefore be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the mayor and the Los Angeles City Council hereby honor Richard J. Santos for his being elected National Commander of the American Legion in 2001 for his outstanding contribution to the people of the United States of America. It cannot be in any more appropriate time since we in this conflict in the Middle East today to honor you and present to you and honor the American Legion as well, and all those men and women who served us, served in our country.
We accept this citation, a resolution, on behalf of all the veterans and the legionnaires in the state of California and throughout our country. Again, the recognition is warranted for your veterans within this state that make great contributions to your community. And to you, Councilman Holden, we thank you for your membership in Jackie Robinson's Post 252. And we look forward to working with you. And if there's anything our organization can do for any of your constituents on veterans issues, please feel free to contact our staff. Again, thank you very much, and have a good morning.
I'd like to acknowledge the individuals who were with the National Commander Santos today. We have Dan Hellington, he's a National Executive Committee member. We have Leonard J. Toddren, Commander 1998, 1999. San Gabriel. And we have Ronald J. Hanson, Department Commander, American Legion Department of California. And El Caster, Department of California National Alternate Executive Committee, 2002. I thank all of you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. The chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco for a presentation.
Council, president, and colleagues, we're celebrating Los Angeles Music Week. And I wanted to bring to attention one of our great assets on the east side, a gentleman who has worked very hard and will be the recipient of our recognition. His name is Bobby Rodriguez. He's born and raised in east Los Angeles. Graduated from Silesian High School, served in the military, has traveled throughout the world, holds a Master of Arts degree, a superb trumpeter, works very hard, and is the president director of the Land Jazz Ensemble at UCLA, Studio Jazz Ensembles at Pasadena City College and L.A. High School for the Arts. He is the leader of the Jazz Adventure, City of Los Angeles Jazz Mentorship Program, Jazz Goes to School, where he collects Jazz, America, and other programs. He has been president of Hispanic Music Association, Inc. for 10 years, Grammy nominee in the year 2000, earned a gold and three platinum records, and has produced his own recordings, as well as those for others. He's recorded with Quincy Jones, Lado Schifrin, Christina Aguilera, Arturo Sandoval, Tina Turner, Wynton Marsalis, Tito Puente, Ray Charles, Herbie Hancock, Jack Khan, and many others. He's part of the Salsa All-Stars. Bobby has shared much of his time and talent to the children in exposing them to different types of Latin music. He is well-known and respected by edge carries in and out of Los Angeles. Bobby is considered the musical Santa Claus during the holidays. His tunes illustrate family traditions of the seasons and of the things that most everyone can relate to. I would like to present to Bobby Rodriguez first a ponciera because of the holiday season and all your great work with the community and children. And also want to tell him that he has done a great job with the Monterey Hills Jazz Festival, he's been part of that. And we really enjoy that festival every year. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to give this certificate of commendation to Bobby Rodriguez and all his great work in bringing Latin jazz and music to the community. Thank you so much, Bobby.
It's truly a pleasure to be here. And sometimes, music gets lost in the shuffle because we think of it as an extra. But if you really stop to think about it, music has so many things and the ingredients in it takes so much ability, the talent, the commitment, the desire, the soul, to continue forward, and the education it takes to also commit yourself to a career of music, not just an overnight success. Because that sometimes is just luck. But a career in music like the esteemed Marle Young, I'm very pleased to be up here with you. I'm not going to say very much because in this time in American history, we're at a crossroads. We're at a crossroads in helping our young children, re-identifying ourselves as American citizens and citizens of the world. And I appreciate your concern, and I thank you very much for that. Ms. Margie Evans, of course, needs to be thanked because without her, none of the artists would be here today. My mother and my wife, where there's a good man, there are great women. And there is this, the instrument that I've chosen since I was 10 years old at Lady of the Lord's Elementary School. And if you'll give me just a moment of your ears and possibly a little bit of your soul, and help me and support what I'm about to do. Because this is something for all of us. and help me and support what I'm about to do, because this is something for all of us.
Mr. President, colleagues, I would also like to recognize some of our youth who are participating and participants of a program that's still in Los Angeles and Department of Recreation and Parks. Since 1995, we have had the wonderful Outdoor World Program, which brings the outdoor world to the urban youth by putting them in camping and overnight situations and experiences in the neighborhood parks. This is an approach which reduces apprehension and encourages the enjoyment of outdoor experiences. Includes conservation and awareness, the leave no trace philosophy, basic camping skills, fishing skills, camp food preparation, and recreation skills. The equestrian unit, which I am going to recognize today, are eight young people, the youngest riders in the Rose Parade, selected because of their performance on a high Sierra Pack trip. They have been practicing their riding. Next week, they will practice their parade skills on horses that are used for parades and are used to the noise of the parades. The kids will also obviously practice their smiling and waving at the crowd. Because there is a technique there, now don't forget. You can't use the whole arm because you're going to get tired. You just got to use the wrist and above, okay? Just remember that. So let me bring up a few of our youth who have done such a wonderful job. And let me tell you, this is done in partnership not only with Recreation and Parks, but Walt Disney Company, Coleman Company, SDA Forest Service, the Bureau of Land Management, National Park Service, and the California Department of Fish and Game. So let me, first of all, bring them up one at a time and then we'll give them all one great round of applause. Beth Hart. Manny Toledo. Jacob Roy. Tiara Nicholson. Esteban Velazquez. Oh, this is a good one. Is this Lova Manat? Lova? Luva? Susanna Viatoro? Catherine Wessel? Johnny Espinoza? Cindy Espino? Okay. Thank you, Counsel, President, and colleagues. Just give them all a round of applause for all their hard work and for earning the privilege of riding in the Rose Parade. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Colleagues, the final round of presentations are the Annual Music Week recognition. Tonight's call forward at this time, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Ann Perry, Councilmember Perry, along with Margie Evans from Cultural Affairs to launch this year's Music Week presentations. Mr. Weiss.
Thanks very much, Mr. President and colleagues. As you've heard throughout the morning, this is the eighth annual Los Angeles Music Week, and it honors musicians, composers, educators, people in the arts, people in the music community in Los Angeles for all they do to contribute to our great city. And this is the seventh year that our city has joined in the celebration, the official celebration of Music Week. We're pleased to join with the Cultural Affairs Department, the Los Angeles branch of the United States Postal Service, the LA County Board of Supervisors, the law firm of Richards Watson and Gershon, the Target Corporation, LAUSD, Professional Musicians Union Local 47, and the First Congregational Church. The mission of LA Music Week is simple, it's to educate children about music and to recognize many great artists from around this city. I would like to kick us off by recognizing Bonnie Janofsky. Bonnie, if you could come forward.
If we could have a order, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. It would seem to me that we could do this in a much more gracious and appropriate way if the sergeants would just cause the chambers to be a bit more quiet and those who need to be excused, Mr. President ought to just conduct their business in the area behind the chambers and we can do this in a much more expeditious fashion.
Continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to begin our recognition with Bonnie Janofsky. Bonnie, if you could come up. Bonnie is a native Angelino who began playing piano when she was nine years old. Then she moved on to drums, then on to orchestration, and then composing and conducting. She's a multifaceted performer. Her work covers a wide range of styles. And her work, she has a number of credits, whether it's jingles, films, big bands, symphony orchestras. She's been featured throughout the world, and she's been featured among other places on The Tonight Show. She's currently composing for the musical Hollywoodland. And Bonnie, it's my pleasure to present you with this certificate. It's very fitting, very fitting to present you with the first certificate here of Music Week on behalf of what you've done for our city. Congratulations.
I want to say this is a great honor, being a native Angelino, and I'm a second-generation musician. My father is also a, lives in the city, my parents live here, and my father played with Benny Goodman, Dorsey Brothers, Jarry Shaw, Zepa Kugard, so I'm a second-generation big band musician. And I'm really glad that I'm able, in this wonderful city, to be able to, so many opportunities growing up here. Big band, I write for film, for musical theater, member of the Musicians Union. I'm glad that I'm able to contribute to the city, and that's a goal of mine, and to really give back to the city and, I guess, the world with my music. I hope to continue to do that. Thank you very much for this honor.
Ms. Perry, would you like to join us?
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. And I'm very pleased to present a special man today, Mr. Eddie Ray. Eddie Ray is a veteran executive with over 50 years of professional experience and expertise in numerous facets of the commercial music industry. Through his many years of service to the music industry, Eddie celebrates his love and dedication to the world of music and entertainment. His accomplishments include record distribution, production, publishing. Additionally, he has worked in artist acquisition, songwriting, and commercial music education. He's been directly involved in the successful careers of a diverse pool of recording artists, including Rick Nelson, Sammy Davis Jr., Mae West, Al Green, and Fats Domino. He was appointed by President Reagan and confirmed by the United States Senate to serve as a Commissioner of the United States Copyright Royal Tribunal in Washington, DC, and acted as Chairman for eight years. In Hollywood, Eddie served as Senior Executive with MGM Records, Capitol Records, Combert Television Productions, Imperial Records, and Central Record Sales Company. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles and the Ninth Council District, Eddie Ray, I want to salute you for your many contributions to the music industry, and thank you for the many lives of those you've helped by filling their lives with the pleasure of the sounds of song and music. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I want to thank the entire City Council for this great honor, and a special thanks to Margie Evans, who is a fantastic person and is responsible for all of us being here. Also, it's a real pleasure to be with such a distinguished group as all the other honorees. They're fantastic people, and it's a pleasure to meet them. So you have my, I'm very, very grateful and thankful for this day. Thank you.
I'd now like to ask the great Councilmember from the Fourth District, Tom Labonte, to come forward with a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. And I'd like to ask that the great conductor of the Glendale Symphony Orchestra join us, Mr. Sidney Weiss, who told me the most important thing about being a conductor is sincerity. Sincerity to the music, to drive the music, and to drive the orchestra. I'm pleased to join with all my colleagues and saluting you. You have a long history in music and orchestration, and it's so important because in these times and every time, to look to music to soothe our soul, to take us someplace else, but to bring us back home. I just want to salute you as a member of Council on this Music Week, to present you a commendation, graced by the great seal of the City of Los Angeles, and wish you well and let you know we always want you as you always aspire to be, in tune. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Counsel, Labonte. I must say, it's such a great pleasure to see this recognition of music, because I think we always have needed music in our lives, but today, more than ever, we need music for our civilization, for our culture, for our morale. And I accept this wonderful certificate of commendation on behalf of the Glendale Symphony, which is truly great orchestra. Through our concerts and our work in the education in the schools, bringing music to the schools, it's truly a community organization. And I can't leave without just saying one word to the City Council in gratitude for their recognition of music and gratitude for their support of music in the community. And I encourage them to continue and to expand that support, which was so desperately needed today, more than ever. Thank you all very, very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Weiss. I would now like to see a number of colleagues who have presentations. We can go around the horseshoe and see who's ready. Mr. Ridley Thomas, are you ready to make your presentation from the Eighth District?
Mr. President, Mr. Weiss, members of the Council, will you join me in welcoming to the podium Professor Oliver W. Wilson? Oliver Wilson has served as a highly esteemed full professor of political science at California State University, Dominguez Hill, for nearly 30 years. Prior to his position at Dominguez, he served as a professor at California State University at Bakersfield, and has received numerous awards and commendations of distinction for his landmark business, political, and community service ventures. He is lauded by many for his respect for music history and its promotion among local residents through his ownership and valiant efforts to maintain the one and only 5'4" Ballroom and Subur Club, the landmark of historic blues preservation. Now, this ballroom holds a special place of significance because it is seen as the birthplace of Music Week here in Los Angeles, when the legendary Charles Brown performed at Los Angeles Music Week's spectacular inception in December of 1994. It is no secret that Los Angeles was the uncontested center of rhythm and blues in the late 40s. Also, the major independent record labels were here, as were most of the era's major artists. I wonder if these young ladies here know about T. Don Walker, Louis Jordan, Winoni Harris. What do you know about Big Joe Turner? What about Jack McVeigh? Charles Brown? Amos Milburn? Nellie Lutcher? Helen Hearns? Roy Milton? And Nate Holden? Great blues man. And so thanks to the efforts of the executive director of this effort, Margie Evans. Los Angeles Music Week was founded at the 5'4" Ballroom and Subur Club. And although the location is now a dear memory, Dr. Wilson's dedication lives on through his recognition by LA Music Week. A tenacious native of Louisiana, Dr. Wilson is a catalyst for positively impacting our communities. Having served in and administratively directed various school districts, shown leadership in a variety of professions, writing and conducting many historic research projects, we have among us a percentage of distinction. And it's without further ado that we take this opportunity to thank Professor Oliver W. Wilson for his contribution to the history, to the meaning and the depth of music in the city of Los Angeles, particularly the tradition that we know as blues by finding it a place and causing it to maintain a special location in our hearts and in the city's very center. So, Dr. Wilson, we say thank you, and we present this certificate of commendation to you on behalf of a grateful community, particularly those of us who reside in areas surrounding the 5'4" Ballroom and the adjacent communities that have also benefited from it.
It's indeed a pleasure to be here. I bring you greetings from California State University to make the seals. I don't know, and I can't fully conceptualize why I was brought here to enjoy this great honor. Nevertheless, I'm here, I want to convey my appreciation to everyone who's responsible for being here on this august occasion. But for Margie Evans, I would not be here. And I want to thank Margie Evans for her endeavors in creating Music Week. From the bottom of my heart, I thank everyone here and everyone who's responsible for my business.
Thank you. Now, I believe we have a presentation from the Third Council District. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. Earl Palmer, please. Earl Palmer didn't make it today. Well, I'm sorry too, but I do have a presentation for Earl Palmer. Let me just state for, on behalf of Earl Palmer, and for the record, since this is being televised throughout the Los Angeles region, so Earl Palmer will be able to watch it tonight on the local cable channel. Presentation for Earl Palmer. Earl Palmer was born in New Orleans on October 25th, 1924. He was first called drummer on the New Orleans R&B recording scene from 1950 to 1957. Palmer played on countless sessions by all the immortals, Little Richard, Fats Domino, Smiley Lewis, Dave Bartholomew, and many, many more lists here. And I keep listing them, listing them if Earl was here to listen, but I'm going to move on. Earl was learning rhythmic patterns as a tap dancer at age four. Such contacts led him to be around drum kits on a regular basis, and it didn't take him long to master them. Bebop jazz was his first love, but R&B and blues paid the bills starting in 1947. Now, let me tell you something about 1947. That was a very important year. Tom Labonte, the historian of the City Council, has a lot of information, but 1947... Tom LeBonge, the historian of the city council, has a lot of information, but 1947 is the year I was born, so that's very, very important. We assume that. Thank you, Mark Ridley Thomas. So that started paying the bills in 1947, when Palmer joined Bartholomew's band. Palmer remained the king of taps at Cosmo's fabled recording studio until 1957, when a Shirley and Leo session led to an A&R offer from Aladdin Records boss Eddie Messner. Palmer found studio work just as plentiful in Los Angeles, making major inroads into the rock, jazz, and soundtrack field, as well as playing on countless R&B dates with his frequent compadre Rene Hall on guitar and saxist Plas Johnson. So the next time you pull out Little Richard's "Toody-Fruity," Smiley Lewis's "I Hear Ya Knockin'", or Fat Domino's "The Fat Man," please keep in mind that it's Earl Palmer's feverishly stroking that beat. And congratulations, Earl Palmer. Congratulations on the honor bestowed upon you by the Los Angeles Music Week. Through your profound inspiration, creative expression, and extraordinary musical talent, you have helped to enhance the beauty of our culture and enrich the lives of those in our community and in the city of Los Angeles, in particular, the 3rd District of San Fernando Valley. God bless you, Earl Palmer. Thank you very much. And speaking on behalf of Earl Palmer, Eddie Redd.
This is a fantastic honor to accept this on behalf of Earl Palmer, whom I've known for over forty years. I've had the, we, I know records that I have been associated with, that Earl was on. For instance, Fat Domino, we had eighteen consecutive million sellers, and he's been on many, many others. He's one of the greatest drummers of all time, and this is a real pleasure, and I'm sure he thanks all of you for this.
Mr. Zine, "I Hear Ya Knockin", and now I'd like to turn to Council District 11, Councilwoman Cindy Misakowski for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. My honoree is also not able to be here today, but it's another great name in music. And my honoree is Kay Starr. Kay Starr was born in Dougherty, Oklahoma, in the 1920s, and was recognized very early on in her family for having some great musical talent. She began singing at the local radio station, WWR Dallas, its weekly talent contest, with great success. She came to the notice in the 1930s of bandleader violinist Joe Vanoudy, when he came to Memphis to play "The Peabody Hotel," and he heard her on the radio. She then went on to sing with that band, and in 1939, she joined up with the Glenn Miller Orchestra. So she was a big band singer from the very early, early 40s. She went on during World War II and was hired by Charlie Barnett. And during her time with Charlie Barnett, she recorded several V discs to be played to our United States Armed Forces overseas during World War II. She settled in Los Angeles and began her career as a solo performer, and had no trouble finding work, and went on to join Capitol Records, where she had a number of successful albums. Her most successful, or the song that she's most associated with, and her biggest hit was called "Wheel of Fortune," and it earned her her first gold record and number two top-selling single in 1952. Be it jazz, country, pop, Broadway, or R&B, she earned the title of hitmaker, recording over two dozen top-40 successes between 1948 and 54. In 55, she moved over to RCA Records, and she again topped the American and British charts. She actually had a song in 1956, which sold a million copies, a gold record, called "The Rock and Roll Waltz." With that song, she became, she had the distinction of being the first female vocalist with a top-rock-and-roll era song. So she was big band in the 30s and 40s, and then rock and roll in the 50s. She still performs. She obviously has cut back in her appearances, but due to, and I think many of these great musicians that we're honoring today, due to the release of compact discs and reissues of some of the great songs of the 40s and 50s, she is being rediscovered by a whole new generation and new audiences who are discovering her great talents along with all the others that we're hearing today. So, Miss Starr wasn't able to join us today, but I know that she's going to be listening and watching, and we will give to Marjorie the resolution that cultural affairs will present to her in her honor of her longevity, of her success, and her great contribution to music, musical entertainment, for a number of decades and hopefully more to come.
For our next-to-last presentation, I'd like to ask a council member who was not born in 1947, but who may be the most distinguished musician on the council, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I can ask Mr. Caparella to join me up here. Many of you know Rich Caparella as the smooth voice of K. Mozart in the morning. He welcomes you on those tough days coming to work, beating the traffic out there in Los Angeles. He was also a smooth voice in Schenectady. He told me when we presented him with an honor earlier this weekend that in Schenectady, everybody knew him. Everybody knew who he was. He couldn't leave the house without people taking him aside, saying what a celebrity he was. Then he came to L.A. and he said I was a nobody. Well, he certainly is not a nobody now. He is well-known to this entire community, really enriches all of us. And besides being a classical DJ, he is a player in a rock band, so it's nice to see somebody who has that crossover appeal. So, just want to honor him. Congratulations, Rich, on your contributions to Los Angeles and to music in our communities, and thanks for coming down to City Hall.
Very briefly, thank you very much, Councilman Garcetti, and thank you. I pride myself on having an imagination, but I never imagined that one day I would be summoned to a room this imposing, in front of a group this distinguished, and it not involve hosting bail. So I am truly honored. And my gratitude can really be expressed in something I mentioned about a week ago, is that I feel as though I've actually been absorbed. I'm actually, I think, part of that ether of Los Angeles, and it's best expressed in the way I feel about a comment that I'm increasingly getting from people 35 and under. It's a comment that used to turn my heart to ice and make me feel old and washed up, but now fills me with a pride and a joy and a sense of accomplishment that cannot really be expressed. It's when a listener comes up to me and says, "I grew up listening to you on classical radio." For that, thank you very much, and thank you for this honor.
Colleagues, if we could go out of order for a minute and take a break from L.A. Music Week, I'd like to introduce, if we should take a break and go to another matter, we are graced by the presence of two very distinguished individuals right now. One of them is one of the most distinguished authors living in the world today, a great American, a great Angelino, and someone whom I am very proud to represent in the 5th District, Mr. Ray Bradbury. And to make a presentation to Mr. Bradbury on behalf of our great city, it's my privilege to introduce to you the great mayor of the city of Los Angeles, Mayor Jim Hahn.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss. Ray Bradbury, I know is one of your favorite constituents. To members of the city council, certainly my pleasure to be here today with someone who I felt I've known a lot longer than I've actually known personally, somebody I grew up with, somebody who opened my eyes and my imagination. I really only got to meet in the last year or so, but I've enjoyed the friendship that's developed and the insights that Mr. Bradbury continually provides. And we're here to celebrate Ray Bradbury and all he's meant to our society, especially his works. He just came out with a brand-new book, "From Dust's Return," that he said he's only been working on for 55 years. It's off to great reviews, and I hope it's as successful as all the books that he's written over the years. You know, Ray was not born in Los Angeles, although he's really adopted us. He graduated from Los Angeles High School. He sold newspapers on the street corners in the late 30s. That was just a little later than my dad was selling, our dad was selling newspapers on the street corners, Janice, as well. Ray said that during that time, he was a student of life here in Los Angeles. He has spent his life and career writing here in Los Angeles. He is probably best known for his book Fahrenheit 451, which was first published almost 50 years ago. And he wrote that book in the library of UCLA, in fact, in the basement of that library. And he was telling me that it was actually a dime novel, because he had to spend, he was renting a typewriter in the basement there that charged 10 cents for every half an hour to write. And told me he wrote that book in nine days. Pretty good. What's especially wonderful about Fahrenheit 451 was it talked about the evils of censorship. It talked about how important books are to all of us in society. Unfortunately, many of the predictions in that book came true. It's up to us to make sure that the spirit of that book is not lost on us, and we can prevent a day when firefighters turn from saving homes to burning homes. He saw the future of media and communications when he wrote about the convenience, or rather the inconvenience, of always being in touch through the phone. We certainly all know that, or other technology. He predicted the current demand for instant news, and we are seeing it as it happens. All the news programs you watch every night are another car chase, and he predicted that. He's also known for his love of public transportation. He is from the city of the automobile, but he's vowed that he will never drive one. He doesn't like the new technology in general. He's written all about science fiction, but he hates computers. So he's published more than 30 books, close to 600 short stories, numerous poems, essays, and plays. His short stories appear in more than 1,000 school curriculums as recommended reading. I'm proud to celebrate the works of this visionary man. I have a proclamation here, if I'm allowed to read it, that whereas Ray Bradbury was born in Waukegan, Illinois, in 1920, by 1931, he began writing stories on butcher paper. In 1934, the Bradbury family moved to Los Angeles. Bradbury graduated from Los Angeles High School in 1938, and his formal education ended, but he further educated himself during the day as typewriter and in the library during the evening. Sold newspapers on Los Angeles street corners from 1938 to 1942. And whereas, Ray Bradbury has written more than 30 books: The Martian Chronicles, Fahrenheit 451, Illustrated Man, Something Wicked This Way Comes. In addition to his numerous books, Bradbury has written for the theater and the cinema. One of his more well-known projects outside of books is his screenplay for John Huston's classic film adaptation of Moby Dick, for which Bradbury was nominated for an Academy Award. However, his name reached a peak in popularity with 65 adaptations of his stories for television's Ray Bradbury Theater, and whereas his work has been included in the Best American Short Story Collections three times, he's been awarded the O. Henry Memorial Award, the Benjamin Franklin Award, Aviation Space Writers Association Award, the Grand Master Award for the Science Fiction Writers of America, as well as an Emmy for his teleplay of The Howling Tree. Bradbury's writing has been honored in many ways, but the most unusual acknowledgement came when an Apollo astronaut named the Dandelion Crater on the moon, after Bradbury's novel, Dandelion Wine. And whereas, in 1964, Bradbury was the creative consultant for the U.S. Pavilion at the New York World's Fair. He also created the interior metaphors at Disney's World's Epcot Center when it was being built in 1982, and he currently resides in Los Angeles with his wife. And again, he recently published his new novel entitled "From the Dust's Return." And therefore, as mayor of the city of Los Angeles, I'm pleased to pronounce this day, December 14th, 2001, as Ray Bradbury Day in the city of Los Angeles.
There isn't much I can say, except I came to L.A. in 1934, and I've been part of this city for a long time, and I love it, and I see all the wonderful things that are beginning to happen, and I look forward to the next eight years to working with all of you, to making the city as beautiful as it has always intended to be. Thank you very much, and dear Mr. Mayor and all of you, for this honor and this presentation. Thank you.
In fact, I don't think it was an exception to our national celebration of Music Week, because you have given us a lot of music for the mind, and we appreciate that very, very much.
We'll now conclude our presentations for Los Angeles Music Week with presentations from the distinguished president of the Los Angeles City Council, Alex Padilla.
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss, and congratulations, Mr. Bradbury. I had a distinguished honor, actually, in your home, as Councilmember Misakowski, to be co-honorees of the Children's Freedom Award, along with Ray Bradbury last year. So that's one of the highlights of my life. But to conclude with the Music Week presentations, I have two. As President of the council and Representative of the 7th District, I have a presentation for my district, and given the vacancy in the 2nd Council District, I have the privilege of presenting theirs as well. First of all, the recipient this year in the 7th Council District is the Honorable Vicky Reynolds. I believe she has, she's not here, but a representative is here to accept this on her behalf. In addition to her contributions to the 7th Council District and music in the city of Los Angeles, I believe most of you know, Ms. Reynolds is also very accomplished, an active member in Beverly Hills, her native Beverly Hills, where she's previously served in the school board, including being president of the school board, including her terms on the city council, including previous and future terms as mayor of Beverly Hills. And since 1999, her appointment to the State Board of Education by Governor Davis. So for all she does for the 7th District and the city and to the California, if you So for all she does for the 7th District and the city and to California, if you can relay this certificate of congratulations and thanks to her, we really appreciate it. And might I call forward representatives of the recipients in the 2nd Council District? Yes, I have it here. Are they here? Okay, they're overwhelmed from the press conference, so we'll try not to make this too long. And thanks, Marty, for accepting on their behalf. The 2nd Council District, as many of us have learned in the last couple of months, is quite a diverse district and I think reflects the current and the future city of Los Angeles. This year's recipient in the great 2nd Council District is Buck Page and the writers of The Purple Sage. And so we want to recognize them for all they do in all corners of that nice, compact, neatly drawn 2nd Council District and other boundaries of diversity of communities, diversity of people who truly enjoy their music. We wanted to thank them for their work and contributions as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, word is their voice has gone tomorrow singing at the press conference. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Madam President. I think this should have gone earlier, but my apologies that we didn't. I'd like to invite all the Hollywood, LA Bridges folks up here. This is the last presentation for today, but certainly one that I hope is not the least. Many of us all know and some probably have offspring that do this, some might have been themselves ex-skaters, skateboarders, who are great kids, who are looking for a place to spend time after school, to be active in our communities. And there's just such a group of young people in my community, they skate right around the corner from my house, some of them skate in Hollywood, some of them skate in Echo Park. And I know that we have a great Rec. Parks Department that is doing all it can to get temporary and permanent skating locations. And I asked them to bring their skateboards here today, but they were afraid they might get arrested. And nevertheless, these are a talented group of individuals and I wanted to honor them here today and ask one of them, Ivan Vargas, to read a poem that he wrote that recently won first prize in LA Bridges essay contest and landed him a new compact computer, which he should be very, very proud of. But first, let me honor Millie Martinez, who is a parent involved with giving these kids a place to skate in front of her own house. And also Jenny Olivas, a teacher who has been very active in LA Bridges as well. Case managing, not teaching, excuse me. And for the guys, Francisco?
Not here today.
Edgar Reyes, not to be mistaken, for Ed Reyes. Jasmine Vargas, Ivan's brother. Ivan, Ivan Vargas. Hector Martinez. Carlos Palma. Julian Martinez. Francisco Fernandez. Mario Alvarez. And Eric Luna. And Ivan's going to say our closing moment of inspiration.
Good morning. My name is Ivan Vargas. I represent Bank of Middle School. The name of my poem is "My Dream for Peace in My Neighborhood." My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if there was a decreasing in gang activity and mentoring by ex-gang members. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if more community services to clean out graffiti on buildings were also available. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if more activities to keep youth away from gangs was made available, like the skate parks, we could say. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if there was a decrease in drug dealing and sales. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if more recreation parks were constructed in my community. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if more jobs were available to gang members to keep them away from the streets, at least so we could be safe. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if liquor stores did not exist on every corner. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if we had more shelters or rehab centers for homeless people and those who have drug addictions. My dream for peace in my neighborhood would come true if the city had more fundraisers for gang intervention programs like the Hollywood-LA Bridges. But I have a question. Why does all this have to be a just dream?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you to Edgar for that great moment of inspiration and the kind of thing that we're going to start council with at least once a week. I believe that does conclude our presentations for today, so we can now move on to the orders of the agenda.
Approval of the minutes?
It's approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Those are presented and approved.
Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be addressed. Item number four, requests from applicant in Council District 13 to continue this matter till January 11th.
Without objection, item four will be continued to January 11th.
Item number 27, request that that matter be continued to December 19th.
Is there any objection to continuing item 27 to the 19th? Seeing none, so ordered.
Item number 35, request that that matter be continued to December 18th.
Is there any objection to continuing item 35 to December 18th? Without objection, so ordered.
On the regular agenda, items numbers one through three are items noticed for public
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Colleagues, items one through three are now before us. Items noticed for public hearing. Do not have requests from members of the public to speak on these items. We shall deem the public hearing both open and closed. Members wishing to be heard on items one through three? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items numbers five through 30 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items five through 30 now before us, public hearings have been held in committee. I do have cards on items 14, 15, 18. To reopen those public hearings would require a motion from the floor. Any specials? Ms. Galanter?
I'll do my best here. I'd like to move a public hearing on 15.
Okay, let's call 15 special and motion to reopen the public hearing has been made. Is there a second? Ms. Missakowski seconds. Any objections? Then seeing none, let's take that item first and we will reopen the public hearing, but let's go through the rest of the agenda first.
Mr. President, item number 22 is a report submitted without recommendation. There is a new CAO report that has been circulated. Let's call that special. We have before us, Mr. Clerk?
Items numbers five through 14, 16 through 21, 23 through 26, and 28 through 30.
Okay, any other specials? Members, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items numbers 31 through 46, with the exception of 35, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item number 37O has a substitute motion submitted by Councilmember Labange.
Let's, is that amendment technical in nature?
I believe it is.
Okay, then let's accept that as a friendly amendment and vote on 37 as amended. We do have cards on item 33, let's call that special. Any other specials? Mr. Holden? Excuse me?
32 and 33.
32, called special by Mr. Holden. And 33 as well? We have cards on that, so we'll hear from members of the public first. Any other specials? 42, I've just been informed, also has a technical amendment. We'll vote on that. 42 as amended. Any other specials? Seeing none. Then, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items, including 37 as amended and 42 as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Mr. President, items numbers 48 through 50 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Excuse me, as a supplemental continuation agenda.
Mr. Rudy Thomas?
Yes, Mr. President. Fourth with on items 19 and 20, please.
Fourth with on 19 and 20. Mr. Clerk, the items, please. 48 through 50. 50 called special by Ms. Han. We have cards on item 48, we'll call that special. Ms. Missakowski calls 49 special. Mr. Zine? Fourth with on item 31, please. Seven and eight? Fourth with on seven and eight? Ordinances have been approved. 48, 49, and 50, all three called special. Next item, please.
Mr. President, not on the agenda is special one. City Attorney would need to make the findings as to the need to hear today.
Okay, let's hold that on the desk. Let's come back to that.
Item number 47 is a closed session item. Did you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk.
That brings you back to item number 15, called special. Councilmember Gander, a motion adopted to allow a public hearing.
Ms. Galanter?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hold on. We have a number of speakers in the committee here and I believe some of them are here today as well. I think this is an important enough issue that the full council should hear from them. Subsequent to the committee's meeting and to the council's deferring the item, the legislative analyst has prepared a report, and I see Mr. Deaton getting ready to say something about it. And I've also brought in a, or I will be bringing in a motion to adopt the recommendation in the legislative analyst's report, which I think is on page two. But I think it would be appropriate, first of all, to hear from Mr. Deaton and also to hear from the airport if they wish to be heard. I see Ms. Kennard is here. And the people who are most affected by this problem, I believe, are also here in the audience and I think if they wish to be heard, we should allow them the time to be heard.
Let's take the speakers first for members of the public and allow staff to respond to any questions or issues they raise as part of their presentation. Public hearing has been held in committee, but we're reopening it for purposes of allowing speakers to be heard for the entire council. Just watching the clock here, I'd ask for brevity from the speakers. Please try not to be repetitive of statements and issues raised by prior speakers and, if possible, to keep your comments to two minutes or less. The council calls forward at this time Mr. Tom Walsh, to be followed by Manuel Soto and Joe Davis.
Yes, good morning. Tom Walsh, President, Hotel Employees and Restaurant Employees, Local 814. You've heard from us here before. You've heard our members testify to you about the devastating impact that we've suffered after September 11th. We represent the duty-free employees, gift-and-use employees, food and beverage employees at LAX and Ontario airports. A full one-third of our members are not working right now and they won't be working through the holiday season. However, at the Airport Commission last week, a very important proposal was discussed. And we'd like to thank Ted Stein and the members of the Airport Commission for adopting a proposal which not only provides rent relief to concessionaires to keep them in business, but very importantly links that to providing a requirement that they comply with all city ordinances, including the responsible contractor ordinance, and bringing people back to work. And that's what we're all here hoping will happen. This was a very important component for our members. However, this tragedy, the effects of this tragedy will go on beyond December. And for this proposal to truly be effective in bringing people back to work, we believe very strongly that relief should go beyond December 31st and into next year. And we understand that the Airport Commission and the city has a very difficult task, on the one hand, wanting to do everything possible to bring people back to work, but on the other hand, making sure that the airport is being physically responsible. It's a delicate balance, but I think we can do, think of many creative ways to make sure that people go back to work and the airport's up and running as soon as possible. And we would appreciate your recommending that the board continue looking at this into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Manuel Soto, to be followed by Mr. Joe Davis and Coco Serkari.
Council President Padilla, other council members, good afternoon. My name is Manuel Soto and I'm with Soto and Sanchez Investments. I have a gift shop called I Love L.A. in Terminal 2 and Terminal 5. I'm a small business, DBE businessman that runs two concessions and I'm a sub-concessioner of W.H. Smith. I'm here today also to also talk about the proposal that the Airport Commission put through. It does not give us enough time. January 1st drop date is not enough time for us. I'd like to see if we could have that at least till July of next year and maybe we could revisit it or if the business returns. I mean, our most important issue is hopefully the business returns to the airport. So I just here pleading our case, I'd like to continue to stay in business. I'd like to continue to employ people that are part of this city. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. Mr. Joe Davis, followed by Coco Serkari and Ms. Betty Dixon.
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity. W.H. Smith is the News Gift Master Concessionaire at LAX, operating 41 locations throughout all of the terminals, a majority of which are newsstands and bookstores operated by ourselves and our DBE partners. Several weeks ago, we were given the opportunity to make a brief presentation to your Commerce Committee regarding the difficulties we and our DBE partners have faced due to the dramatic changes in business since September 11th. We talked about a financial model for airport retail in which a 5% drop in revenue eliminates profits altogether. A 10% drop in sales requires drastic cost-cutting measures just to survive. The most notable of these measures are employee cutbacks. A 20% drop in sales results in a scenario that is insurmountable by any cost-cutting action within the concessionaire's power and in which participation on the part of the airport in the form of minimum rent relief is critical, not for return to profitability, but for survival of the concessionaires, especially smaller concessionaires like our DBE partners. The Board of Commissioners responded to this dire situation by, among other measures, a minimum rent adjustment for October through December. This is a significant step and is very much appreciated. However, we hope it is just a first step. We would ask that two issues be kept in mind regarding this relief package. Firstly, eliminating and adjusting or adjusting the minimum rent does not bring concessionaires back to profitability. It simply moves operating losses for the concessionaire from being unbearable toward the bearable range as long as this relief is in effect. Secondly, while some airports have shown improvement over the last few months in business, unfortunately, LAX has not. As I presented several weeks ago to the Commerce Committee, the combined sales of ourselves and our DBE partners since October 1st, weekend and week out, for 10 straight weeks, has run 21 to 23% below last year. There is no indication that this will change anytime soon, certainly not by January 1st. The retail business at LAX in January and likely beyond will be largely the same as it is now and has been for the last few months. We respectfully submit that this same relief that was graciously determined by the Board of Commissioners to be appropriate for October through December is every bit as critical beyond December 31st. Thank you.
Ms. Coco Serkari, to be followed by Betty Dixon and Joe Lyons.
Good morning, respected council members. My name is Coco Serkari, and I'm the Vice President of ICE Currency Services, a company that provides and has been providing an essential service, primarily currency exchange facilities at LAX, for the past seventeen years. Firstly, I would like to sincerely thank the city, council members, and the airport management for its support and encouragement that has culminated into a timely and supportive rent relief package for us concessionaires. Whilst I do not wish to sound ungrateful for the much-needed help we have received, I would like to draw your attention to the fact that come January 1, the program calls for a return to original contract provisions for payment, even though most of the other circumstances under which the contract was undertaken are nowhere near their original levels. It must be noted that the only thing that returns to how things were prior to September 11th is the rent we owe. There is no indication nor likelihood that passenger numbers are going to climb back in the next few months. Basically, come January, we would be faced with the same situation that we were in a few weeks ago. How do we make good our rental obligation that runs almost ten percent higher than our total income? How do we stay in business? How do we hold on to our employees with sales that are still down over thirty-five percent, keeping in line with international passenger numbers, and still be expected to pay a guaranteed rent that was determined in a different world in a different time prior to 9/11? Numbers simply do not jive. The losses would run into the thousands of dollars per day, challenging our very survival. It's therefore our earnest request that further relief be granted past December 31st and into the year 2002. We humbly ask the airport to evaluate the situation on a quarterly basis and continue to waive the MAG and charge a percentage rent till such time as passenger numbers and sales return to pre-September levels. We've been partners with LAX for the past seventeen years and have fulfilled all our obligations on time, every time. It is now our hope that our partners stand by us at this moment of need and lends us a supporting hand whilst ensuring that our business and its employees are given a chance to survive these extraordinary times. Thank you very much.
Ms. Betty Dixon, Mr. Joe Lyons, and Ms. Maria Loyah.
Good morning, council. My name is Betty Dixon. I've been an operator at Los Angeles Airport as a DVE partner with duty-free shoppers for the last fifteen years. I'm here to speak on the issue, item number fifteen, as it relates to the relief that's given to concessionaires. I do appreciate the proposal that has been put forward, but again, it's not enough. Our business will not return to normal January 1. As a matter of fact, December 1, two of my major flights in the terminals where I operate were discontinued, thus causing my sales to drop even further. I am here to ask that you consider having the relief given to tenants, at least on a quarterly basis, to be reviewed before it comes back to normal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Lyons, Ms. Maria Loyah, and Ms. Esther Sepeda.
Mr. President, members of the city council, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Joe Lyons, Vice President of Business Development of DFS. We operate two concessions that lack the specialty retail and the duty-free concession with our DVE partners. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak and also commend the airport and the commission for granting a program for release at the four-December meeting. In our case, as with the other concessionaires, unfortunately, the program just doesn't go far enough. We need relief beyond the December 31st period until business returns to normal. Let me explain something about our business and why we need that ongoing relief. After 11 September, both concessions' sales dropped dramatically. Specialty shops declined thirty-five percent and remain there. Duty-free concession was affected the worst. Sales in the duty-free concession are running sixty percent below last year for the months of October and November. This is in part because of lax position as the gateway to Asia for Asian travel. The concession, the travelers from Asia, Asian passengers are simply not traveling to and from the U.S. They have elected to stay home or travel domestically. This is very important because our concession depends for over fifty percent of its sales on the Asian traveler. Future projections don't look good. Bookings await, flight cancellations continue. For the rent, we pay the minimum guarantee or a percentage of sales, whichever is greater. This has resulted over the last several months in concession fees, which is seventy percent of sales, leading to significant losses for ourselves and our DVE partners. The concession relief which we have been granted addresses that situation. Unfortunately, it ends on 31, 31 December. We simply cannot afford to continue paying seventy percent of sales, and we don't see any immediate prospects for return to normalcy. So we request the consideration that the relief be continued. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Maria Loyah, Ms. Esther Sepeda, and Mr. Joe Houston.
Hello. Hello, my name is Maria Loyah, and I represent the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. We work with LAX workers and several unions in LAX. And first of all, I want to thank and acknowledge the Airport Commission's effort in addressing directly the impact that 9/11 has had on all of us, and in particular, workers at LAX. However, we feel that it is not enough, it does not do enough, to effectively address the uncertainty and the suffering that workers go through on a daily basis. They have to think on a weekly basis whether they are going to have a job or not. And we feel that the rent relief that was proposed by the Airport Commission does not do enough. And we would like your leadership and your guidance in directing the Airport Commission to find other options in extending the airport, excuse me, in extending the rent relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esther Sepeda, Mr. Joe Houston, and Jung Kim.
Good morning, council. My name is Esther Sepeda, and I manage CBR operations at LAX. CBR is a female-owned company and a minority concessionaire within Terminals Five and One. We thank you for the current rent relief proposal for the duration of 2001. We ask that rent relief be extended for 2002 or until sales reach what they were prior to 9/11. This month alone, I've had several days, and my sales didn't even reach a thousand dollars. Yesterday alone, within Terminal Five, only thirty-one hundred passengers departed LAX. Prior to 9/11, that figure would have reached eight thousand eighty-five hundred. Delta flights scheduled have dropped from fifty-five to forty-two. In order for business survival, we need additional rent relief. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Joe Houston and Jung Kim.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and city council members. Thank you for this opportunity to express our concerns and problems and exercise our freedoms that we all possess in this great nation of ours, and that since 9/11, we have come to appreciate even more and no longer take these freedoms with any degree of complacency. Since 9/11, as the General Manager for Smart Card at LAX, our revenue is seventy-five percent for the same period last year. However, our expenses are one hundred and twenty percent for the same period last year. It doesn't take a Harvard business degree or business graduate to recognize when your costs are on a graph like this and your revenue on a graph like this. It's an ominous sign. In our P&amp;L statement, the largest cost item is our minimum annual guarantee to the airport. It accounts for fifty-five percent of our total direct cost. In not-so-eloquent terms, the daily guarantee to the airport of ten thousand dollars per day is killing us. The revenue we paid to the airport, combined with other operating expenses, exceeds our revenue by over a hundred thousand dollars a month. And by the end of this year, if we don't have a change in our contract terms, we will lose over a million dollars. As a small business, we cannot stay in business. We are very grateful to the Board of Airport Commissioners, who on the recommendation of airport management, did provide rent relief to qualifying concessionaires for this fourth quarter. However, come January 1, we are back to the desperate terms of our contract, desperate since 9/11. We are totally powerless in our economic situation. We know the airport, too, has suffered economically. We're aware of that. However, the airport has the luxury of guaranteed income from its concessionaires. It has the luxury of raising revenue by taking actions such as tacking on a ten-dollar surcharge on every car rental at LAX. It has the authorization of raising revenue by raising parking fees. It can tap into 1.5 billion dollars in federal money that the federal government has authorized to cover additional costs associated with airport security. We, like other concessionaires, have none of these luxuries. We can't reduce wages because we are legally and morally obligated to a living wage. We are legally and morally obligated to a collective bargaining agreement. We are legally and morally obligated to our disadvantaged business partners. We can't raise the price of our products without airport approval. The only thing that can be done to alleviate our desperate situation is to implore you, to ask you to encourage the airport to renegotiate car contracts or waive the minimum annual guarantee and take percentage of sales, which in our case is sixty-five percent of every dollar. Without this action, the continued survival of many of lax concessionaires is questionable. Thank you, and despite this, it's a holiday, happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice time. Jung Kim.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and city council members. My name is Jung Kim. I'm a concessionaire doing baggage storage service at the airport for the last twelve years. Since September 26, I have ordered, I had ordered from airport to stop my concession. Eighty-five percent of the nature of the business is baggage storage, and fifteen percent is other little service like repacking and helping other security wrapping service for the passengers. So opening the business by doing fifteen percent of the business went down another forty percent out of fifteen percent. You could imagine the number of reduce of gross revenues. But I keep getting a minimum guarantee, which is almost seventy-five percent of my gross income is my minimum guarantee, and fifty percent is my percentage, whichever greater I used to pay, which was minimum guarantee. That money I got bill every month. Finally, a few days ago, I had a collection department from airport called me collecting this money. So I haven't paid anything yet, but a couple of days ago, percentage rate was permitted to do so. So even percentage, it's ridiculous for me. Eighty-five percent of my business got stopped to do so. How can I survive here? So finally, yesterday, I called the country administration from January 1st. You must go back to minimum guarantee. If you cannot pay, just better sign off and terminate. I'm a DVE minority company, compete with a big corporation. Last September, I win this, I got awarded this concession agreement. How can I just sign and thank you and goodbye and go? It's impossible. I'd like the city council and the airport commissioners revise my contracts and consider my situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment on item fifteen. Ms. Galanter, still on your time.
I think, Ron, did you want to say something?
I just want to comment that the, in looking at this problem, the airport, as an entity, has suffered a significant loss in revenue as well. And that the, to continue the proposal that was adopted by the Airport Commission for a prolonged period of time, I think financially will be difficult, if not impossible, for the airport. I think accordingly, what we have recommended, Mr. Fugioke and myself, is that the Airport Commission, that the council requests the Airport Commission to look at each concession, because I think some concessions have been impacted severely more than others in that that one suit-fit-all is not an approach that should be used. They should look at each of these concessions, find out exactly what the impact and what the long-term situation looks like, and adjust those contracts to somehow reflect several things. One, to try to make the concession as viable as possible while still maintain the financial viability of the airport. And I think that, as they have stated, the concessionaires today, there has been a long-term partnership. I think that partnership has been good. I think the partnership can be good as we come out of this situation, there's been a lot of things done at LAX to make it more friendly, to try to attempt to build up its usage. We have a lot of things yet to do. We have a lot of things to promote and to change the image at LAX, and we're in the process of doing that. I think we need to do that cooperatively. But I don't believe a one plan for everybody is going to be satisfactory for either the airport or the concessionaires in the long term. And accordingly, we have recommended our, we have made our recommendation.
Thank you. I'll do the best I can here. Members of the council, I think the issue before us is pretty clear. We have businesses that, any of whom we've enticed to come to the airport. They have worked cooperatively with our airport management. I think the management is in kind of a peculiar pickle themselves right now because, of course, the airport's revenues are down as well. One of the things that we've asked the CIO and the CLA to look into is the fact that the airport has so far determined that it is not going to accept any federal money. And that's a very long story, which I know my voice is not capable of telling at this moment. Mayor Han, as you know, is the chairman of the Task Force for the Council of Mayors throughout the country, seeking federal assistance to bring some additional money to the airport to help pay for security costs. That is one of the costs that has increased for the airport during this time. Thus far, our Airport Commission has declined to accept any of that money, and I believe there's quite a bit of money out there. One of the speakers mentioned more than a half billion, I believe, that the feds have appropriated. We would not get it all, obviously. But it is hard for me to stand here and find ourselves in a position where we're turning down revenue that would help us, at the same time, we're turning around and saying to our partners, "We're not going to help you because we don't have enough revenue." So I think there is a real problem here, and I think it's important for us to request, cajole, beg, whatever it is we have to do, that the Airport Commission do more than it agreed to do last week. At the time the Commission met, they listed the minimum annual guarantee for the months of October, November, and December, which means there's the half of September when no one was in the airport that the businesses are still responsible for, plus anything starting in January. And the Commission indicated at the time, this was a one-shot deal. You weren't interested in hearing anything further. I think that our role is to encourage them to become interested and to see these businesses and their employees as partners in our success or failure, preferably success. The CLA has, there is a substitute motion which I would like to move. It's just to clean up some corrections in the original committee report. up some corrections in the original committee report. And then, Mr. Fugioke and Mr. Deaton have recommended that, their recommendations are on page two of their report, and I'd like to move those in addition. We also request that you, you or the airport or both, report back to the Commerce Committee on what can be done about the federal money.
We'd be pleased to do that. We believe that the airport commission will be looking at the post-January 1 time, and hopefully, and as it relates to the concession agreements, and also, I believe by January, we have some, we've been working with, with airports and the commission at all on the, on the grants issue, and I think we will have some progress on that in January.
I hope so. Now, I'd just like to, the one thing I left out is I'd like to ask that the pure recommendation that they do this on a case-by-case basis includes starting immediately, because the problem with saying, well, we have to look on a case-by-case basis, is you have to get in line, and the line can be a long line and take a long time. And I, I know that there are many people in airport management who appreciate that this is a crisis, we need to get the crisis management in full gear, like today, or soon.
Thank you. Next speaker is Councilmember Pacheco. Now, he wanted to acknowledge the presence of airport staff, they wanted to also add a response to any issues that are raised. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, my concern with this whole, the timing of this whole issue, is that, first of all, I don't agree with the previous speaker that we have to entice people to come to the airport and open up those concession airstands, because my understanding is, those are very, and when we have the proper passenger loads, those are very lucrative contracts for the business community. And I do recognize that the airport has suffered, and that we're trying to make it more friendly. My problem is that we are not balancing making the airport more friendly and healing the wounds at the airport with the wounds and the suffering and the unfriendliness that we're experiencing in our inner cities, because we don't have police officers, because they're going to the airport, because we don't have traffic officers, because they're going to the airport. And my concern is, here we are again, throwing more money at the airport, or losing money at the airport, and no one is putting any money into the communities. No one is telling me that we're going to protect our residents, but we're constantly trying to make it easier and more friendly at the airport. Well, you know, some of us would like our neighbors to be more friendly, and some of us would not like to be prisoners in our own communities, and that's what we're having here. We are having people constantly under local terrorism because of our gang members, but yet we send all the money to the airport. And at some point, we're going to have to deal with this. And if it doesn't happen today, and it doesn't happen tomorrow, I really, really don't know what I'm going to tell the mothers of the little kids who are getting shot, and the parents of the little guy or the young youth who's going to the bathroom, getting shot in our own rec centers, because we aren't sending officers out to do their job in the neighborhood because they're covering the airport. I mean, at some point, the bleeding has to stop in the community. I know the airport's suffering, but at some point, our residents need to feel that we care about them either as much, or if not so, more than we seem to care about this airport. And I'm just tired of sitting here watching this go, go forward, go forward, go forward. Someone has to give us some relief in the community, and I'm not happy about the fact that we're taking more traffic officers and sending them to the airport for this curbside, especially when no one talked to me as the Chair of Budget and Finance about the impact on the general fund. I'm not sure if that's the department's fault, the mayor's office's fault, but working in the dark around here is not something I like reporting back to my residents, because I can't get them more officers or drug enforcement in their neighborhood because no one's talking to the council. So I'm telling you right now, I appreciate the recommendations on a case-by-case basis, but now I have a technical question for the attorney. Can we alter the conditions of this action, or do we have to simply reject it because it doesn't meet our needs? I just need to know how I'm going to vote if it doesn't meet our needs, because I know right now I have some problems with it.
Madam's your attorney? Ms. Galanter, maybe?
The commission's actions, what we would be doing is not directly processing their action at all. We're simply, on our own, making a request to them that they consider modifying what they've done. The reason this is performed in council is that Mr. Panaya and I had asked for a report from the Department of Airports from LAWA on the economic situation, and the council's actions all stems from the report of the LAWA management to our committee and the testimony we received at the committee. Subsequent to the committee hearing, the commission took an action, and they asked, the commission had asked us, Mr. Stein asked us, to wait at council and not consider the committee report until after the commission had acted. So the only thing we're doing is making a request to the commission that they lighten up a little bit from their position of saying that we're granting you relief to the end of December, and then you're on your own. So it's just a request, it's not a Prop 5, it's not a review, it's a separate council file and a separate action, but we don't have any jurisdiction over the commission at all in this case. We're simply making a request. It's their money as well, which alas, we can't get off the airport for the communities.
Mr. Stein?
President, colleagues, I understand the suffering that's taking place in the airport and commission, or committee. We heard personnel committee some issues regarding the airport, and I thought they would be included in this. I understand this is totally separate, but is there a request in this for additional DOT personnel to go to LAX to help with this recovery?
We will need a few DOT officers for one week period, then we will be releasing all the DOT personnel by the end of next week. They will then be free to work on traditional DOT responsibilities.
Okay, and I support Councilmember Galanter on this, but I do have one other question, which I understand the airport is going to be opening tomorrow at 5:00 AM for the curbside check-in. And I heard on the news that if you leave your car for one moment, it's going to be cited and impounded. And I would ask, you're going to have personnel there to do citations. If we want to be serious about this issue, we need to have a tow operation that is there on-site and very visible to let the folks know that we mean business, and we can help the recovery effort, at the same time prevent any kind of further tragedy from occurring. I don't know if that's part of your contingency plan, but if it's not, I would hope that it'll be included, one for the top, one for the bottom. I think that'd be a real sober message to those people who say, well, I'll just leave it for five minutes. I would just ask that you do that. And I know it's not directly connected, but the overall perspective, I think it is.
Councilman Stein, let me reassure you that we've always had tow truck service at our curbside. We have increased that in anticipation of opening the curbside on Saturday.
I mean, on-site?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Holden?
Just a few questions, City Attorney. Is it against the law, a gift to public funds, is that against the law? Yes, yes or no?
If it's determined to be, if an item is determined to be a gift to public funds, it is not what we would call legal, yes.
If this is determined to be a gift to public fund, Mr. Pacheco, it is not legal. I think that was, answer your question rather than the one that Ms. Galanter attempted to answer, to draw a line for you. Now, my question regarding the resources, how much money will this cost the airport? That's the question, Mr. President.
We are spending millions of dollars.
President, I'm asking, for the time, I'm asking a question. Go ahead.
In additional costs, I can assure you that the airport is taking into perspective that our city bills are like the IRS, we have been paying all of our city bills, so that the cost of...
How much money, if you could grant this request, the Smith and to the...
Oh, to the concessions, I apologize, I thought you were talking about the, the security costs. The concession relief is going to cost the airport $9.5 million over the three-month period.
$9.5 million? Wolfgang Pucker, he's a concessionaire?
Yes, he is.
He's not here asking for any relief? Would you apply to him also?
He's under license to, I believe, CA-1.
All right, so he's not asking, he's not entitled to this?
We're taking it by case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case basis. Let me just say that if we were to grant this request, would that be considered a bid enhancement? This is the question, Mr. President. Would that be considered a bid enhancement? Because this was done by competitive bids, is that correct? Yes or no?
That's a legal question, Paul, I'm not prepared to answer.
The fact of the matter is that this was done by competitive bids, yes or no?
Yes, it is. It was done by competitive, RFD.
Right. Now, we modified a bid, nah, I mean, modified a contract, is that considered a bid enhancement? And could we be sued for that? Those are questions.
It would, it would depend. We would have to look at the bid, we'd have to look at what was being proposed, and the attorneys at the airport would have to make a decision.
Mr. Holden?
No, I don't, she's a lawyer, let me ask you that question. And the next question is, what's the terms and conditions of the contract? How long, for how many years, Smith and how long?
Each of them are for different terms.
What is the terms? I want to know.
A typical term, I think the WH Smith was for five years, it's been extended twice.
And how many, what about the other?
It just depends, most of the food and beverage are for periods of 10 years.
What about, there's another one, I just, duty-free?
Duty-free, I believe, is five years.
So it is five years. Let me just say that, on my time, now, those concessionaires are not the only ones that are adversely affected. They can lay some people off, direct proportionate to the amount of business coming in. Number two, the question is, a gift to public fund, until that's determined, I can't vote I, because it's illegal to do that. A likewise situation is that in the city, we don't reduce the property taxes of those businesses that are losing money because of September 11. Many of them are losing money, some people have to go out of business. And if we're going to give, that's a give, give money to these concessionaires, we have to do likewise to other businesses that adversely affected as a result of what happened September 11. And we will be, we will be called on to do that, I'm sure. So rather than I have this vote known today, we got to answer the legal question that's raised by Mr. Pacheco, and the one that I just raised about whether or not this would be considered a gift to public fund, and that would be illegal if that were the case. So we should not jump gun, sort of speak, and vote yes on this today, and then tomorrow you got to change your mind because it'll be determined illegal, especially if you're going to be sued. Some lawyer there will sue you, and say you should not have done it, will win in court because it'll be proven that there was a contract, and you gave the money back, allowed them to pay less. Now, if you were to say, I'll defer that until such time that we are operating again, a portion of what you owe us, then you can get away with that, I believe, but not the total gift. You will not be able to get away with it, it is not legal.
Thank you.
And you'll be sued. And I can't vote for that, no.
Ms. Han?
Thank you. Can I second Ms. Galanter's motion? And then, may I say that, clearly, as a member of the Commerce Committee meeting, we heard speaker after speaker after speaker, many of you heard them here today, and appreciate you coming back today to tell us, you know, we, we've had, obviously, you know, a terrible disaster. While it happened on the East Coast, it clearly affected us, and it may be semantics, Councilman Holden, but in my opinion, it's, we're not giving money, we're just not receiving a portion of their rent, and so it depends on how you look at it. And I, I believe, and, and Mr. Pacheco, let me say, I, I mean, I have the same issues in my community as you do. I mean, we, we have urban terrorism throughout Los Angeles, but I think that's really not the issue that we're trying to discuss today. I mean, we have an airport that's losing money every month, we have concessionaires who are losing money every day, we have workers who've been laid off since September 11, that very afternoon, we had people that were laid off and until this day have not found employment. We are in a major crisis. You know, we had an, the city had an opportunity while back to sell the airport, to, to give it away, but we decided not to do that. So we own this airport, and the airport is the landlord for, for these tenants, and I think we have an obligation to do everything we can to help these concessionaires, and ultimately to get workers back. We've got to make this airport healthy. This airport is, in many ways, a symbol of our city. And while we have many other needs at this point, it's my feeling that we need to do whatever we can to, from the bottom up, from the concessionaires, from the tenants, ultimately regain the workers that will be rehired. We're opening the curbside drop-off and pickup starting this Saturday morning, I think that will help. One of the things I'm concerned about is, and I'm not clear, are we still not allowing non-ticketed passengers pass the service? Okay, well, in my opinion, that will still have an adverse effect on many of the concessionaires, and I'm hoping, I would like to see that addressed immediately, because many of the things we're going to do, will we ever get back to normal, will we ever get sales back up to, still based on some of the actions we're taking for security reasons? So my feeling is, three months is not long enough for any kind of rent relief. I would like to see us make a recommendation to the Board of Airport Commissioners that they reevaluate this in January. And clearly, may I say for the record, some of the concessionaires I know were in arrears before September 11. And I think it is unfair and irresponsible, and it's not the right thing to do for some of those concessionaires to kind of use September 11 as a means to, to get the, the relief. I mean, I think we need to look at this case by case, but I think that the concessionaires and the tenants also need to be responsible and take ownership of some of the reasons they were having lagging sales before September 11. So let's not lump everybody together, but I want to make the recommendation, hopefully today, that we'll ask the Board of Airport Commissioners to reevaluate this and possibly extend this beyond January.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise as Chair of the Economic Development Employment Committee in support of this, and I want to thank the CLA and the CIO for making the recommendation that we pass on to the commission, the recommendation to extend this. I think that this is important, not only for our economic overall health in the region, but let's remember what economic health is about, it's not just about supporting businesses, it's about the employees those businesses employ. These are people in our community, many of them, for instance, down at the airport, are ex-gang members, which cuts right to the heart of some of the issues which I agree with Mr. Pacheco are, at the core of what our work is day-to-day here, people who can have now living wage jobs, people who have been able to turn their lives around by having these good jobs at the airport, and that's critical. And also remember, this is allowing, though, we have obviously impediment right now, if we can begin to accept the $44 million in potential federal funding in and use that, that this is going to be a drop in the bucket, not accepting as high rents as we have right now. I think that's a very important thing to consider here, even though we are continuing that piece of this, that we will actually be coming out of this with better fiscal health if we can get that piece as well, and we all need to lobby the airport commission very aggressively to make that happen as well. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
Council President, members of the council, I share my concerns that have been articulated by Councilor Pacheco, but I also feel that many of the workers who are part of the concessions are the same folks that live in districts that represent, that are low and moderate income. I look at page 3, section 1B, develop an agreement for employers to rehire some or all of their employees laid off as a result of the recent terrorist attacks, so on and so on. That's significant, in that we try to maintain this health for our communities, the workers that are basically going to be the ones that take the brunt of this situation, so that motivates me to support this effort. But I do feel that we need to start looking at our, at our departments in a more comprehensive fashion, to understand what is the opportunity cost of paying. Perhaps look at that issue from that point of view. The other concern I have is that, I understand we're going to be federalizing our security, and we went out to the legal cities, ran into the workers that were basically in despair. I was talking to workers who are moms, that are going to be laid off in the holiday season, people that rent, and I wanted to know, be opportunistic with my time here, if we're, how we are handling that issue. And that, thanks to the, the significant fact that the federal government is going to be responding to us, how do we connect it so that the people in our communities aren't being hurt the way they are? And I just want to understand the status of that situation with the workers at the, at the security gates. Please hold my time.
Um, Councilman Reyes, immediately after 9/11, when we began to appreciate the full employment impacts of the terrorist attacks, we, um, put into full force our job development program in conjunction with CDD and other, and some state agencies as well, EDD, to try to figure out how many resources could be put to bear to help displaced workers. We've held three job fairs, and we continue to do that. Um, we also have ongoing resources on a daily basis where people can come in and get opportunities for new, new training and new jobs. We are also working very closely on the legislation that is coming to bear with respect to who can qualify for these new federal jobs as the screeners are being transferred over to federal jobs.
So clarity, those individuals will be laid off at the security gates? Is that what we're talking about?
They, they will have an opportunity to apply for the new jobs, and we're working at the federal level to further understand and clarify the requirements, um, that will have to be brought forward to, to qualify for these new jobs.
So we'll provide technical assistance, house support to the board, to make sure that they fit the requirement?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Sikowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support the motion and the recommendation, and I was just going to address the issue that I think Mr. Holden had raised about whether or not this is a bid enhancement or a gift to public funds. Members of the council, we have on our agenda a little bit later another contract, and that contract has what's called a standard contract clause. And as I just asked and checked, the standard contact, contract clause is part of the airport concessionaire contract. It's called the force majeure clause. The force majeure clause says, notwithstanding any of the provisions in this contract, either the contractor nor the city shall be held responsible or, or liable for failure to meet obligations in the contract if that failure is due to circumstances essentially outside of the control of either the contractor or the city. Such causes include, but may not be limited to, strikes, fire, floods, civil disorder, acts of God, or of a public enemy, acts of the federal government, acts of war, acts of terrorism. I don't think we've ever had more clearly presented to us those, those things described in a force majeure clause that says, in the contract itself, it allows and acknowledges, it gives us the platform, the foundation, from which we then negotiate in the way that the Department of Airports has talked about and which we are reinforcing. So there is no question about this changing anything other than what the contract itself long ago envisioned, and I, um, support the efforts today. I also do rise to support the concept and statement of Mr. Pacheco, because I think as we look in the future on some of these costs and the allocations of our resources, which we know today are being very, very much strained, that we do have to look at some of our priorities. Yesterday, I was at a conference, and Mr. Zine was there as well, in the Valley Bureau of the Los Angeles Police Department, talking about increase in crime, particularly of gang violence and serious crime. And our police deputy chief for the Valley said the number-one act of terrorism that we face in this city is that of gang violence in our local neighborhoods. So as we talk about that, as we look at allocation of resources and, and visit where we are spending money, we have to remember that that's gotta be our number-one priority. But notwithstanding that, this effort in, in giving relief where it's needed is appropriate. I think we will take up Mr. Pacheco's concerns as we look at allocation of other resources in the city to the airport, and have to make that comparison when that comes up through both budget finance and public safety. But I did, didn't want to rise and say that this is, according to the contracts that the city itself interests, totally within the framework of what makes sense, is reasonable, and is not in any way, um, a gift of funds or an enhancement of contract.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, um, I, although I do have a law degree and I did practice law, I can't unequivocally say this is not a gift of public funds, but I think if you're gonna really look and meet the goals of what we're discussing, then this agreement doesn't go far enough. And if I'm technically looking at this, this agreement isn't even before us. I mean, if this is just a report on the, the airport, this, we're not voting on anything. I mean, we're kidding ourselves that we think we're voting on anything to ratify or send any sort of message on this issue. If we really want to discuss this agreement, we need to prop 245 and bring it before the council. And I understand that we still have three or four more council meetings, which would put us into January. What was the date of this action in the commission?
December 4th.
December 4th. So we have five council meetings from December 4th. What would that be? Pardon?
It's not a Prop 5, it's not related.
Oh, it's not in front of us. We're just discussing the report. I know, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying this is not even technically in front of us. So in order for this to technically get in front of us, we need to prop 245, and I'm just checking on the timeline. If it was December 4th that the action occurred, I have five council meetings, once is my last day, I can prop 245?
December 19th.
December the 19th, okay. Look, if you really want to do this right and you want to help the workers, let me tell you how I see it. The airport took $11.4 million worth of city revenue when it took our traffic officers. I have $11.4 million of goodwill built up at the airport, because that's how much money we're gonna lose because our traffic officers went to the airport. So why don't we think of something a little more aggressive in helping our community workers? Why don't we put in abeyance the contract rent for one year? Why don't we think of a repayment plan over three years of that rent? That way, it's not a gift of public funds, it's definitely not a gift. And for the next year, these concessionaires can be at the airport rent-free, in the sense of not paying right now, but it's not a gift, because we have a repayment plan over three years when the airport comes back. Because I'm telling you right now, if you're gonna be fiscally sound and fiscally responsible here, we gotta look at this from all different options. They're right, if you really want to help the workers, this isn't the way to go. This is nothing. This is sort of a smoke and mirrors, if you're gonna do three months. So, uh, whoever was the spoke representing the workers, they're right, you're gonna need more time. But I do think if someone had talked to the council about this, and maybe talked to Mr. Holden, or maybe talked to my office, we may have been able to discuss these issues a little more, uh, deliberatively than to have to do it here on the floor, then we could help the workers, we could help the concessionaires, and we won't be giving away public funds. But either way, contrary to popular belief among ourselves, this isn't even before us, and we're not voting on anything. And I will speak to Mr. Holden and the rest of you about potentially Prop 245 in this, so that it can really be before us, so we can discuss this in a legal context and with actually some authority, instead of just sort of kidding ourselves that we actually have some authority right now when we talk about it.
Um, Mr. Pacheco, on the 245, under the new charter, your authority is to veto the action and you can send recommendations back to the board?
Correct. I can send it back and say, "Good try, you didn't go far enough, you gotta do more for the workers, try again." Yes, I agree with you there, and that may be my vote at that time, but since it's not legally in front of me, I can't send that message to World Airport, that they're not doing enough for the workers.
Mr. Pacheco knows about the new charter. Mr. Holden.
Uh, Mr. President, members, this is a slick attempt in order to accomplish what they want, thus to get a discussion for the council regarding the consideration of granting to the concessionaires, uh, by saying, "We're gonna bring employees back who laid off." It's a gimmick. Uh, Mr. President, members, notwithstanding what Ms. Sikowski has already said, it's a gift of public funds, disaster or not, the fact of the matter is that a disaster set you out of business, you shut down shop, that's one thing. But let me just tell you, Ms. Han, this is not semantics. We were sued. The city of Los Angeles was sued, and we lost. We lost because we used parking revenue funds to improve roads, and that's what it was not for. A lawyer, and I spoke against it, a lawyer said, "Oh, wait a minute, I heard that argument on the council floor, file a lawsuit that we abused our powers." One, the lawsuit got a little bit of money, but it got a million dollars in attorney fees. And I'm gonna invite that lawyer to attest your action today or that by commission, because others will be asking for the same thing. For example, the parking contractor, they asked for relief, is that not correct? Yes, did you grant it? No. You didn't grant it because it's political. There were those who were in power did not want to give them relief because of how they were selected. Now, you can't say, "I'm gonna give it to one concession and not to the other." You're only asking for lawsuits. We are representing the public and their money. It's about time we stopped the rhetoric and making good speeches and signing good and do what's right and what's legal. It is illegal to do what you attempted to do today. No matter how you sound, it is still illegal, and it should be tested in court. And I guarantee the test, using the same attorney who sued us on the parking revenue fund, to make sure that we don't give away too much more money before it's too late to stop this crazy action that you're about to take, that's about to take place. So, Mr. President, members, whether it's the intent on the part of the commission, airport commissioners do take this action, and we cannot act as if they have taken it yet, the action, right, then they're, they're against the law, and then I would encourage the lawsuit, so we can find out where we stand in regards to this kind of action that we take. And I'm just voting on the report, whether it's meaningful or not.
Ms. Galanter.
Well, I always appreciate being lectured by my colleagues and, um, they, yes, I know, and I, I mean, you've cut, you've stopped just short of calling me names, and I appreciate that a lot. I think it's important to recognize a couple of things here. Mr. Pacheco is a lawyer, Mr. Holden is not a lawyer. I am not a lawyer either. Um, and boy, am I glad. The, um, I do want to point out to you, though, that as a matter of fact, each of these contracts is a negotiated contract. The vendors were selected through an RFP process. The, uh, they came in with their package of subcontractors, and we negotiated a deal with each of them. We have, I believe, I am informed by an attorney, the, the right to renegotiate a contract if it was a negotiated contract. I also want to point out to Mr. Pacheco, even though he's an attorney, that this council has the ability at any time to pass a motion requesting the Airport Commission or any other airport commission to do whatever we think they ought to do. We don't have to wait for them to think up the idea first. They don't have to do any request that they do, but there is no legal constraint preventing the council from recommending to the Airport Commission that they do something. The mere fact that they already did part of it should not preclude our being able to request that they do something more. My argument to all of you today is that we don't have a lot of time to waste making fancy speeches, somebody else said. These, these people need relief now. That's been recognized by the airport management, it's been recognized by the Airport Commission, it's been recognized by everybody involved, I think. The longer we wait, if we do not adopt this report, what we're saying to the Airport Commission is, "What you guys did is fine, we're going away on vacation." Uh, the, everybody can sit and rot, and January 1st, they go back to paying their, their full obligation, or they go out of business. The last speaker in the public hearing pointed out that about 85% of her business is gone. If she goes out of business, how does that serve the airport or serve our community? If she has to lay off employees, as most of them have already done, that doesn't serve the communities that, where those employees live, former employees live, it doesn't help our economy or our communities. And while I agree that it'd be nice to use airport money for all a bunch of other things, federal law prevents our doing that. And I personally don't see any prospect of changing that. So the issue before us is, do we want to recommend to the Airport Commission that they help these guys out, or do we want to sit here and not recommend that they be helped out? I mean, we ought to help them out.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I, um, I'm not lecturing any one individual in this council, it's not my style to lecture any one individual, single anyone out. My only point is that, uh, we are not in any position to move this any faster or slow it down, because this is not before us. So the idea that I'm gonna impede or stop this today is not accurate. If I wanted to bring this to council, I have to use the Charter rules of bringing a Prop 245. But I'm not, we're not gonna slow it down, we're not in a position to slow it down. My only point, though, is if we were in the loop of discussing this, there are some alternatives that may be even more beneficial to our workers and to our community. And it's unfortunate that we have to come here today and talk about this after the fact as an adopted action of the commission. I do concur with the request and the fact that we should, uh, adopt the motion by Ms. Galanter, and I believe seconded by Ms. Han, that we make those requests, I would simply ask that as, as since we're in the position of requesting, there's no reason to limit our request and ask that they consider my option of giving them a longer, a period of, with, of abeyance on their rent or reduced rent, and that it include a even longer structured repayment plan, that's, that way everyone can benefit, the employees, the airport, and the concessionaires. And I believe, after losing $11.4 million of revenue for the City General Fund, that I think it's an appropriate request that we have some goodwill on our side to extend to our constituents, the workers, on the side of the airport. Unless someone wants to challenge the CAO's report, but that's the number I have in terms of the amount of revenue that was lost because our traffic officers were relocated to the airport. So I think that gives us, uh, some goodwill to request that the employees be treated better and that we also deal with this in a longer-term solution. So I would ask if it's okay with the maker of the motion and the seconded, that the request include, uh, my option and is an option that's more friendly to the workers?
Thank you. It's adopted, it's a friendly amendment. Mr. Garcetti.
Move the previous question, Mr. President.
His question has been moved. One remaining speaker on the queue, Ms. Han, is that okay? A vote would not be necessary.
No, not necessary.
Okay. So that ends discussion. Uh, Mr. Clerk, the matter before you, please.
The matter before you, there's a substitute motion on the desk, uh, basically making technical amendments to the report before you, and also moving that the CAO and CLA recommendations, uh, be approved and direct the CAO and CLA to report back to the Commerce Committee regarding accepting federal funds, as well as the Pacheco-friendly amendment.
Okay, everybody clear on that? Mr. Holden, do you have a question?
No, the, uh...
It's a substitute motion. It's substituting for the report that's on the agenda. Okay, has been. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 1 no.
That is approved.
Item number 32, call specified council...
Next item is item number twenty-two. There is a new CAO report that has been submitted on this matter, and a motion is required on the floor. It's a report submitted without recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. President. That is the extent of what needs to be done in this instance, to move the CAO's report since it came without recommendation. And I'd like for this to be a precedent-setting disposal of this matter, sir. I move the previous question.
Got it moved on. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-two, call Special Act Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item thirty-two.
Members, we are going to have a report here for the department on this sewage spillage that took place November the second into the bay.
Good morning, President, council members. I'm Jim Langley, Assistant Director of Bureau Sanitation. I have with me Mr. Barry Berger, Manager of the Wastewater Collection Systems Division. I have a very brief overview of this spill that occurred, uh, back on November third, and I have a few slides to go along with that to give you a pictorial view of it. What you're looking at here is the Biona Creek Pumping Plant. It's our third-largest pumping plant with a capacity of three point four million gallons per day of flow. If you look at the next slide, please. This is a, a view of a portion of the tributary area to the pumping plant. As you can see, PS six fifty-two there, I believe, uh, six fifty-four, I'm sorry. That's where the pumping plant is located, and approximately two miles away is when the first spill was reported. Uh, this occurred the morning of November third. One thing I want to mention is that this plant is under construction. One of the requirements of the construction was that the contractor come in and essentially build a separate bypass or backup system. In other words, this plant was rebuilt on an interim basis to provide all the service that was provided by the existing plant while the existing plant was being worked on. One thing I want to emphasize is that the contractor, as I mentioned before, had this bypass system in place. The area that you see in the yellow is the existing plant, that's where all the work was being done. During the bulk of the construction, the dotted line that you see, the bypass system, was in operation. On October twenty-fourth, we put the existing system into operation as a test. The, um, construction included increasing the size of the pumps. We also upgraded the control and alarm system, and we added an additional standby generator because of the increased pump size. Now, here's what happened. On the evening of Friday, November second, at roughly six o'clock, I think it was six oh five, a traffic accident involving a vehicle striking a power pole damaged the transformer and created a, an area-wide outage that included the pumping plant. As you can see, under normal operations, that pumping plant would be operating, pumping flow up to an elevation that could be flowed by gravity to the hydrogen treatment plant. After the, uh, the power pole was damaged and the power was lost in that area, it took roughly nine minutes to restore power. However, the backup system and the pump plant, uh, in essence failed. The backup system did not come back on, the standby generators did not operate. So, in effect, what happened was with the pump plant not in service, that was a major blockage in the entire system. Uh, flow did not come out of the pump, pump plant or the wet well area. In essence, the sewers filled up and eventually began to overflow. Now, this all occurred in the period shortly after six o'clock until nine-thirty in the morning when we got our first call. That first call prompted us to send crews out to the Panama Street area where the first spill was reported. The crews worked for a couple of hours trying to, to restore flow in the line, but could not break the blockage. They called additional crews out as other parts of that system began to overflow, other maintenance holes in the area began to lose wastewater. It should be noted that throughout this construction, this pumping plant was and still is under the control of the contractor. Uh, in fact, when we eventually discovered, our crews had, had gone to the pumping plant location and had to jump the fence to go in and find that the, uh, breakers that operate the bypass system had been shut off. And they quickly closed those breakers and restored pumping and the spills stopped. An interesting part of this spill is that in looking at all the beach data, uh, that includes bacterial monitoring, we were not able to trace the spill. Uh, in fact, if you look at the chart, you can see that the concentration of bacteria actually decreased after the spill, and this was typical of the beach stations along, um, all the Santa Monica beaches that were closed. A few days after the spill, we met with the LA County Department of Health Services, Heal the Bay, an environmental group, uh, our environmental monitoring division, the Department of Public Works Public Affairs Office, and our wastewater collection people, and came up with these enhancements to our notification procedure. We've updated the call-out and notification list. We will be issuing, along with the LA County Department of Health Services, news releases if something like this occurs in the future, and this will come through our Public Affairs Office. We will also coordinate with radio stations to request timely announcements. Apparently, that was not the case when these news releases were received by the radio stations. Workshops will be scheduled and have been scheduled for, uh, next month to meet with lifeguards to go over these procedures. The county has revised and adopted a new beach closure sign, and we will meet on an as-needed basis, uh, in the future to review these procedures. We also, uh, having improved our, uh, procedure for pumping plant construction, which will require in addition to daily checks, contractors will have to test the adequacy of their backup power systems on Fridays and the beginning, or days prior to holidays. And contract administration will ensure this compliance. And what you see here is that the new beach closure sign, hopefully we'll never have to use it, but this sign is very similar to the ones that are used in, uh, San Diego and Orange Counties. Uh, the key difference from the previous sign being that the word sewage has been added to the description of the, the beach closure. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Members of the council, you've heard the presentation. Are there questions that you wish to pose, sir? Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
I think you subsequently discovered there was forty-seven thousand gallons sewage spill.
Two hundred and five thousand. We captured forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one thousand gallons.
The remaining was twenty-four thousand gallons, this is a storm drain, okay? And, uh, somebody had told me one time or another that that was not enough to cause any significant contamination or problem.
Well, apparently it wasn't because the bacteria did not increase.
I know, but it's, yes, but you also said the county decided once they learned of it, closed down certain beaches.
The, the county closed the beaches on the beach.
They were alarmed by this, weren't they?
They were alarmed by the previous estimate that we gave them. And let me back up a little bit. When we, when we first contacted the county health department, we had field crews out there frantically working to try to clean up all these numerous areas.
Because you gave them a larger number than what actually catch spill.
Right. That was a conservative number so that we would make sure that if beaches had to be closed, that they could have a big number to work with in their formula. They have a formula that they use for closing beaches.
All right. Now, why did the system fail in the first place? And why did the circuit breaker didn't work? Was that disconnected, was it had that malfunction? Something you need to discover?
Judy Wilson, Director of the Bureau Sanitation, the contractor left it open. Uh, they have been testing control loops, uh, at the pump station, and the contractor had the breaker open while they were doing the tests and forgot to close it before he left to work.
Was that supposed to be like a redundant system in case if the main line failed?
That's right.
Okay. Now, why did the main line fail? Tell us that.
Uh, a drunk driver took a lighting pole.
What kind of driver?
A drunk driver.
A drunk driver, say it's...
Hit a light pole.
Hit a light pole.
Which then hit a transformer and the whole thing came down.
Came, fell down, or?
The, yeah, that's right.
Broke down?
That's right.
Shut down?
It fell down.
Oh, okay.
Was hit by a car.
All right. And so, that shut down the mains?
That's shut down the main power.
Yeah. How many poles that would, uh, that could be hit that would cause that kind of a problem?
The transformer.
Were there, were there, how many transformers are on those?
There was one transformer hit by an automobile.
All right. How many transformers, transformers that we have on poles out there in that area?
I couldn't tell you that.
We need to know because you, because you really need to have some kind of a case built around them. So, just hitting a pole and not gonna die, that can happen almost any time, drunk or not. So, you don't have any safety feature there to protect the pole that's where the transformers install on it?
This pole was some distance from the pumping plant. It was part of the DWP.
I know, that is, is remote from the pumping plant. And that's where the driver down the street, guy hit the pole. How many, how many situations like that that can occur? Is what I'm talking about. If you got ten poles, ten transformers, then you should have some casey built around them.
We would ordinarily have backup power if something like this happened, but the contractor left the breaker open.
All right. Well, the public has a right to know. It took some time before that information was disseminated to the public. And at the same time, when this kind of, when this situation occurs, I think it was, in this report, it says that we instruct the Bureau Sanitation to work with the Board of Public Works Lead Commissioner, not the PR person, handling Bureau of Sanitation matters to establish a policy for informing the city staff and residents about sewage spills and report back to the Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee in thirty days about how you're gonna do that. So, you do recognize that as part of the report?
Right.
And you will do that?
Yes, sir.
All right. We see no other persons wishing to be heard at this point. Uh, Mr. Clerk, we'll assume that we are to note and file this report since there's no action to be taken?
The recommendation is to adopt the report, correct.
All right. Uh, with that in mind, please open the roll. Uh, close the roll. I'll tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-three, call Special Act Councilmember Holden.
All right. I'll make note of the fact that we have several persons wishing to be heard. Uh, with that, uh, what is your pleasure, Mr. Holden? Do you wish to hear from the, as the Chair of the Committee, do you wish to proceed with the speakers, or do you wish to be heard initially?
Staff report. Thank you, Mr. President.
There are several persons wishing to be heard.
Well, yeah, I think we should, uh, hear the staff report and then let them speak.
Fine. Proceed, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable council members. My name is Adele Hashkalil. I'm a Division Manager with the Bureau of Sanitation. I have with me Judy Wilson, who's the Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. What you have before you today, this morning, for reconsideration and concurrence, is a set of guiding principles, a blueprint designed to establish the vision and strategy for developing a comprehensive, integrated plan to meet the water, wastewater, and stormwater needs for the City of Los Angeles through year 2020, and most importantly, enhance the quality of life for future generations in Los Angeles. These guiding principles, developed as part of the Integrated Plan for the Wastewater Program, is the result of almost two years of effort led by the Department of Public Works Bureau Sanitation in, in partnership with the Department of Water and Power and in conjunction with various other governmental agencies and members of homeowner, environmental, business, and community organizations who served on the steering group and advisory group in this effort. There are no specific projects or programs that are defined yet. Those, along with the fiscal impact and environmental documentations, will be prepared, utilizing these guiding principles as part of the formulation of the Facilities Plan, the Financial Plan, and the Environmental Impact Report. With the concurrence of your councils, this effort will be underway early next year and will end around 2004. At that time, we'll bring back to your council the programs, facilities, locations, costs, and financial and environmental impacts to the city. The public and community involvement and participation will continue and will work closely with the other various city and regional agencies. We are proud of the efforts of the stakeholders who demonstrated a profound commitment to the city's future and improving the overall quality of life in Los Angeles. This is a great example of community-based government in action. I would like to thank all the stakeholders and the community participants for their insight, innovation, and commitment in creating the vision for the future of Los Angeles. In the audience today, we have a number of the stakeholders that wanted to be here today and to, uh, be present at council, and we have three representatives of the stakeholders that worked with us over the last two years that would like to speak to your council and representing the, uh, over a hundred and eighty stakeholders and over a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, community members that we have. What I'd like to do first is to read the names of the people that are here and, and then invite them to speak, if that's okay.
Well, uh, I think you're assuming the job of Chair at that point, sir.
Thank you.
That those who wish to speak have made themselves known. They are Dorothy Green, Cherry Mann, Charles Church, Cindy O'Connor, Polly Ward, and Deborah Berg, in that order, please. Dorothy Green is Ms. Green's...
Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Yes.
In discussions with the Chair of the Committee, uh, we decided to have only three members speak on behalf of the whole group to save time and proceed with the process, if that's okay.
Thank you. Dorothy Green, Cherry Mann, Charles Church, Cindy O'Connor, Polly Ward, and Deborah Berg. You determine which three there will be. Please proceed, ma'am.
Uh, yes, um, my name is Dorothy Green. I'm President of the Los Angeles and San Gabriel Rivers Watershead Council, um, and I'm delighted to be here today to, to address this august City Council because the message I want to bring to you is one of praise for the city agency, for the Bureau of Sanitation, led by Judy Wilson. The process by which this program evolved is an absolutely amazing one, is a first for the city, and I think it provides a model for future involvement of community and city decisions. Um, the staff hired the consultants whose job, they, they laid out the job to really go out and find every single person within the city leadership, um, canvassing over two thousand leaders gleaned from all the, all of your council offices, to invite them to participate in a process that has gone on, as you heard, for almost two years. And this process was really to learn all about the city's wastewater system, all about our water system, about our stormwater system, what the interrelationships are, what the issues are, what the problems are, what the potential solutions might be. And it's only really when you have an informed citizenry such as came out of this process that you can have real, honest, good decision-making. And it was amazing to me that as a result of this long-informed process, that there was almost total unanimity on, on the results. Each of the people who participated, and there were more than sixty, who came once a month for a whole day to learn about these issues and processes. Each of these people's opinions were respected, was recorded, their questions were answered. There was no question that was too insignificant or too minor or considered, um, not appropriate to be asked and answered in a respectful manner. And as a result, the consensus was truly amazing. This whole process is one of building consensus, not just into the community, but among agencies within the city. And here too, this is, is providing a model for the city because I don't know of any other process that has worked to unify city agencies to work cooperatively for a common goal and a common good in a comprehensive manner. And so, I really do want to commend, uh, Judy Wilson, Adele Hashkalil, and the rest of the city staff and the consultants for having done a remarkable job of, of coordinating this enormous effort and bringing so many people along and educating all of us as to the city's needs and options. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All right. We have two more persons wishing to be heard. Please come forward. Those are the two that are standing. Come right on, sir. Please proceed, ma'am.
My name is Deborah Berg. I represent Women's Transportation Seminar on the IPWP Steering Committee. I'm a Harvard resident and a Los Angeles business owner, and on behalf of Julie Inuay, who is the Vista del Mar Neighbors Association of Playa del Rey, um, who drafted, uh, more formal comments on behalf of the entire steering committee, we had a truly unique opportunity to think proactively for the future of the City of Los Angeles and the regional municipalities served regarding water issues. And we enthusiastically answered the call. For once, we were all working together from the very beginning to proactively and collectively protect the water recessed sources for the entire Los Angeles region and to make it what it should be. We are all committed... We are all committed to protecting our environment, educating the public to be participating partners in recycling and conserving water, in reusing biosolids, and for the efficient planning of future infrastructure that will affect us both economically and personally. Our goal is that every citizen, business, and regional municipality understand the issues about our water supplies and to also expect them to be accountable for their usage of this finite natural resource. With all of our diverse backgrounds on the IPWP Steering Committee, and after almost two years together, we came to a consensus about water issues and working in a new direction with Public Works. As the lead agencies, Bureau of Sanitation and DWP, showed us incredible leadership, innovative thinking, and really listening to its citizens. It's not an easy task to coordinate inter-agency involvement about water issues, but this plan can go forward with the commitment from all of us and your leadership to help the process move forward in an integrated direction. This cooperative process has been a wonderful model to work towards as an approach for many city projects. Water has no demographics. Water is for everyone. And I would just like to personally add that this has been a truly remarkable experience working with diverse members of our community and the leadership, Judy and Adele and the many, many people that put in countless hours. What an incredible way to see the planning process come from the beginning so that as these projects go forward and as we address the issues, we'll be able to already know how we stand on these issues and these projects can move forward in a very timely and cost-effective manner. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Last speaker on this item.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Charles Church.
Right, sir.
I would like to thank the city for allowing me to work with them to ensure that we have adequate water and adequate sanitation facilities by the year 2020. I hope that they will do the same thing in other areas. I would like to suggest housing and transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing. Any others of the council wishing to be heard? I see Ms. Kowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what the steering committee members said and thank them, not only for coming down and talking to us today, but thank them personally for coming to my office. And I think they made that opportunity available to each of the council offices. So we had a much more full presentation of what it is you learned, what it is, and how you went about looking at this, working with the city staffs in putting forward this plan. And what I think is remarkable, Mr. Council, is that we have had some of the people who testified, who have been before us on occasion before, clearly taking us to task when they needed to on other things, whether or not I was discharged into the ocean or other items like that, and that across this broad expanse of citizens, you had very, very strong leaders in the environmental movement, you had very, very strong business people, you had very, very strong community people, maybe weren't on an environmental or business side, but just wanted to protect their neighborhood. And from that all, with the type of diligence and effort and time that they put into this, working with the staff, they came with that nearly unanimous report. It's truly a comprehensive plan. I too compliment Ms. Wilson and her staff for really putting this together. And I think it really just was important to say that it's a way the city should do something. It really is a tremendous model, particularly for those things that become complex. There are not easy solutions. You need to realize, and we all need to realize, how integrated every part of that system is that we might not think is connected. And I think it's a great model, and hopefully we can do more of it. So congratulations to everybody involved, and thank you for taking the time today to come down and tell us about it once again.
Thank you, Ms. Kowski. Seeing that there's no one else wishing to be heard, Mr. Holden, Chair of the Committee.
Right. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the staff, of course, Ms. Wilson, and also the committee, the task force, they're better known as the stakeholders, and hundreds of them, diverse groups across the city, who've been working with the staff in coming up with these goals and objectives for the year 2020. And I'm sure that, working as closely as we have in the past and do in the future, we will accomplish goals and objectives, getting some of that, saving some of that wastewater, rainwater, using for some useful purposes, and be more conservative. So I'm going to move that we adopt them for that.
Pursuant to the motion of the chair of the committee, it is now before us. And Mr. Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to open the roll. Now close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very kindly. We'll move now to the next item of business. Mr. Clerk, let me then simply defer to the city attorney who's making a request that we suspend the rules for a special item. And if there's no objection, we will proceed accordingly. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a special motion brought in requesting, by the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, requesting that the council act, it's quote, "friendly" to forty-five. The board acted on December fourth. The department did not realize that the council was in recess last week, and therefore the time would continue to run before the final, this was a final action. This is a grant for funding construction equipment and connection for new production of wells, and the time for the deadline is December seventeenth. The council would need to make findings that the need to act rose after the posting of the agenda and that this intermediate need to act.
All right, on the findings, open the roll. Now close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, on the matter itself, it is now before us. Anyone wishing to be heard pursuant to this city attorney's presentation of the special? Seeing no such person, please open the roll. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very kindly. Forthwith, at the request of the city attorney. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number forty-eight, called special, inasmuch as members of the public wish to be heard.
All right. Again, a special request has been made by our colleague, Mrs. Perry, for reconsideration pursuant to the consultation with the city attorney. This is more of a formality. Mrs. Perry.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ridley Thomas, pro temp. Todd Hayes had put in a card on item thirty-eight, so I would like to afford him that opportunity to speak on the record if he so chooses.
Madam City Attorney, would it then be the appropriate thing to move reconsideration? Or can we just simply afford the...
You need to move reconsideration.
All right.
Make a motion.
It's so moved. And it is now before us that we reconsider item number thirty-eight. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the reconsideration. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
This is being done not on the substance of the matter, but to comply with the right of the speaker who made the request to speak, to have that opportunity by way of public hearing. With that in mind, Mr. Hayes, please come forward before the opportunity to be heard. Members of the council, after his remarkable disposal of the item as deemed appropriate. Sir.
Thank you very much. I personally had charged delivered a three-page document, which I drafted in this Perry's office and presented to her. I spoke to her chief of staff, Mr. Swinney. He says he's never seen or heard of the document. I'm wondering whether or not that's the case with each one of the council persons whom I delivered a copy of the document to also. This is very important. The Nation of Islam, headed by Minister Louis Vericon, is coming to our city, and they requested twenty-nine thousand dollars of fees be waived so they can have the convention center. When, on radio station KGLH, which has a black talk show, talked about the fact that the Million Man March, Minister Vericon collected enormous sums of money, which have never been accounted for, and that in other experiences where there have been gatherings across this nation, the money is never accounted for, and there should be an accounting, and black vendors are never allowed in. Anyway, pursue your records, see if you got this document. More importantly, Minister Tony Muhammad, who was here in the audience earlier when this item was first to be considered, indicated to people in the black community that anyone who spoke out against Minister Louis Vericon or the policies of the Nation of Islam would be killed. Now considering that the council people, the mayor's office, the city attorney's office have a copy of the document where I express pretty much what I'm saying to you now, I cannot understand why none of you raise your voice. Here's the situation. I submitted the card. Mr. Darrell Swinney from Ms. Perry's office intercepted that speaker's card and did allow it, did not allow it to reach the president. That's a violation of Brown Act. That's a criminal act. I'm here now, and you're reconsidering it now because I suppose you're trying to say Mr. Swinney's hide for intercepting a communication to the chair, which he had no right to handle under any circumstances whatsoever. So I have not got much to say except that I'm going to take to the news media, and I think the LA Times would want to know why it is if each one of you have a communication that talks about death threats issued by very, very credible sources. Who killed Malcolm X? The food of Islam, of the Nation of Islam? Why you have not spoken off or paid attention to it, and we have to have a motion to reconsider? So the person who generated the doc, who can indicate to you some more substantial facts surrounding, had to have a motion of reconsideration? More importantly, here's what I'm after. I don't think that you can investigate whether or not these threats have taken place, but I think you have an obligation to turn it over to the city attorney, the district attorney, and the police chief, and have him investigate. More importantly, we should not welcome anyone with open arms and twenty-nine thousand dollars to any facility in our community with this aura of terror taking place. So I will try to find out whether or not Ms. Perry's office has this communication. Mr. Swinney says he has not seen it. I indicated to her staff that it was very important. It was a life or death issue, and everyone pleads ignorance. Well, now you can, because I've got copies here now. I'd like to turn it over to the city clerk, make sure to replicate it, reproduce, and give it to each one of the council persons. And I would suggest that you table this matter. Until these issues can be investigated, I hope that the people with courage who can come forward and testify about the threats they've heard from the Nation of Islam, Minister Tony Muhammad, and various other things. Thank you for your time.
That closes the public hearing on this matter. We now return to the matter for disposition. Is there anyone wishing to be heard? All right. Mrs. Zine.
Yes, Mr. President, colleague, I just have a couple of questions. Is there going to be an admission charge to those attending, or will it be free to those who attend? Is there anyone who can answer any of those questions?
Ms. Perry.
This is the first I've heard of it, to be honest with you.
Well, we voted on it this morning, Mr. Zine. And I'm sorry that you didn't realize that item thirty-eight came up this morning. The reason I called it for reconsideration is because Mr. Hayes wanted to speak, and I wanted to give him that opportunity to speak. This is not a religious event. This is a community outreach event, and the event is focusing on at-risk young people, particularly people active in gang, gang life. It's going to have about fifteen thousand delegates from all over the country to be trained in community organizing, and they will work throughout the Los Angeles area where there is significant gang activity. For example, in my district, they will be going over to Pueblo del Rio, where we've had a, just an extraordinary amount of shootings in the last ninety, ninety days. So they'll be focusing on areas where gang violence is prevalent. It is open to the public. It is free to the public and open to the public. It is also expected to be a convention that will bring two-point-eight million dollars to the economy, and they will be staying in hotels throughout the Los Angeles area, and that will be a boon to our local economy. And the focus of the event is to benefit all communities, especially and particularly those plagued by gang violence. And before I drafted this motion requesting a fee waiver, I did work with the city attorney's office to make sure that it met all of the appropriate guidelines for use of public money or waiver thereof.
My concern was with Mr. Hayes' comments regarding certain individuals and the propensity for violence, but your explanation is more than adequate, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Mr. Holden, you wish to be heard, or are we prepared to vote? Thank you very much. There's no one else wishing to be heard at this point. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is adopted forthwith on the matter. Now, Mr. Clerk, back to those items that were previously scheduled, and that would be...
Item number forty-eight, called special, inasmuch as members of the public wish to be heard, there's also two amended motions, forty-eight A and forty-eight B.
All right. I think it would be useful then to acknowledge those persons who are here to be heard by way of public hearing. There are approximately ten such persons. Members of the council, is there a motion for a specific period of time for the public hearing a portion on this item? Is there such a motion? Length of time on the motion? Five, ten, fifteen? What is your pleasure?
How many cards here, Mr. President?
About ten.
On both sides? Let's do five minutes of votes so I can see how it looks.
All right. We'll proceed. The first person is Earl Brennlinger, followed by Ed Wallace, Edmund W. Hennessy, Bud Hayes, and Mort Allen, in that order, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to take a few moments of your time. I'm here basically for two reasons today. The first reason is that I want to extend my hope that you continue to approve the street furniture fund. My organization, I'm the business manager of the Studio Utilities Employee Local Seven Twenty-Four. We represent fourteen hundred members that operate in the outdoor billboard company and the entertainment industry, and certainly since September eleventh, our members have been impacted. Over three hundred of our members are currently unemployed. So I do think that this is an exciting project that the city is moving forward with. I think it's very exciting for my members, and I want to extend our hopeful gratitude that it continues forward. The second reason I'm here tonight is the, today, is that I'm also an active delegate...
It's almost night.
Pardon?
It's almost night.
Yes, almost night, yes. I'm also an active delegate of the L.A. County Federation of Labor, and it appears to me that through this process, there's been a little confusion. I want to speak a moment on behalf of the relationship that my union has with Viacom Deco. Our union has represented workers there for over twenty-nine years, and it seems to me that there's been a little discussion that maybe this company is not as union-friendly as some others. I would like to allude to the company that came in second in this bid process. While I have enjoyed personally a seven-year relationship with Viacom here in town, the other company, represented by Adshell, aggressively went non-union in nineteen ninety-six, and the workers that I represented still to this day remain non-union, and the company remains on the L.A. County Federation "We Do Not Patronize" list. So the other reason I am here today is to thank the city council through the long and arduous process that you undertook in determining who the best company would be to move forward with this project. And I am in complete support and in appreciation of the decision that you made. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please, and that would be Ed Wallace, followed by Edmund Hennessy. Next speaker, please, and that would be Ed Wallace, followed by Edmund Hennessy. Proceed, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, pro tem, members of the council. My name is Ed Wallace. I'm an attorney with Greenberg Trug, which serves as outside counsel to Viacom Deco. I'm honored to be here today. I was a member once of the New York City Council, so I appreciate how difficult it is for you to assess a long agreement like this and I want to answer just briefly a couple of concerns that we have heard as we did our outreach to members of the council. And I am particularly thankful to those members who did take the time to read the agreement. It's long and to some extent seems very complicated.
Now, did you say you were a member of what body?
The New York City Council some years ago.
And you wished to be heard here today?
I do.
Alright, well...
These days, we are very thankful in New York for the effort that was made by Los Angeles firefighters to come to our town and help us. So whatever went on in the past, we feel a new part of all the cities of this country and I thank you for that.
Well, now we're on a good track. Proceed.
Thank you. Today's vote, if there is one, is not the end of the council control over the new street furniture, but the beginning. Not one stitch of street furniture may be placed in anybody's district without, over your objection, you have an absolute veto. The agreement is clean and simple on one point. Viacom Deco must pay $150 million over 20 years, whether it sells one of the advertising panels or not. The annual payment is made in advance, $3 million in the first year when the contract is signed. But the agreement is complicated and appropriately complicated on the process for choosing the type, the design, the color, and perhaps most important, the location of where the street furniture will go. That complicated process to be sure that there's input from communities, members of the council, city agencies that have to determine safety and so forth, but there's a very simple fail-safe in this agreement. It's called the council member veto. So however complicated it seems, you have two simple rules to this contract. $150 million will be paid, you have a veto to stop any stitch of furniture that should be there. I've reviewed all the criticism that has been made of this agreement by the losing I've distributed to council members an extensive memo and brief and letter on that subject, but let me just allude to one thing because I think most of it, not most of it, all of it, is based on incorrect facts and misleading conclusions. And the simplest example is that the criticism says somehow that the $150 million paid over 20 years should be discounted for today. Fair enough if you want to look at it that way. The RFP said a dollar was a dollar, but look at it that way. But that critique, if you look at the critique, says discount ours and don't discount theirs. That is grossly misleading, it is deceptive, and it is wrong. Be assured of this, you are the city of Los Angeles. This is the most important street furniture contract. You got the most money and you have the toughest contract. I want to commend, I would say thank, but it was so painful, the CLA and all the negotiators who insisted that this contract be as tough as it is. I would also say this, the bid was made at a different time. It was made before September 11th. I am confident that no company, not the rival, not us, would have put those dollars on the table today with the economy in decline. Viacom Deco sticks by its word, it sticks by the bid. One last note, yes, this is the moment to review that contract, hold our feet to the fire, and make sure you have the enforceability you want, but the nature of this agreement is a joint venture. We're providing, my client is providing, a service to the people of Los Angeles and if we don't do it right, you'll get the complaint. If we do do it right, you'll get the credit, but we're in it together. Same thing on the revenue, we have to pay you at least $150 million, but if we all do our jobs right, you'll be paid more than $150 million. So as we approach the agreement and the processes that look so complicated, they're designed to make us work together, to collaborate together, to come to mutual agreement on things. But if you want to look at the dark side of the moon, if you want to be able to tell your constituents you protected them in a bad situation, you have to look at only one thing, the council member veto. Having once been a council member, I can assure you that is a very valuable thing for every council member, able to say, if we don't want it, we don't take it.
And when were you a council member again?
Long ago, 20 years ago.
Alright, alright. You done now?
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Alright? Next speaker, please. Edmund W. Hennessy.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to be here to represent Chrisless and its street maintenance program called Street Works. I'm also very happy here to support J.C. DeSau's bid for this contract. We were recognized a long time ago by J.C. DeSau of our operations in Skid Row and the downtown community, of our commitment to the residents of Skid Row and our commitment to give them job opportunities. We were approached by J.C. DeSau and its desire to get these people involved in services that are delivered in their area and to get these people more work opportunities. I just quickly want to say, we support their operations, we support their proposal, and we welcome working with them to improve the aesthetics of downtown and to increase the opportunities available to our clients. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now hear from Bud Hayes, followed by Mort Allen. And Sergeant, would you have a conversation with the clerk who's parking? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Bud Hayes with Essaro Housing Corporation located in the area commonly known as Skid Row, hopefully not for too much longer. Ed Hennessy actually addressed the issues regarding Skid Row quite well. I'm not going to repeat that. I think the most important thing that I heard today, and it's quite ironic, came from Ray Bradbury. We're here today and we're here every day to make Los Angeles the most beautiful city we can, all of Los Angeles. Ray Bradbury has already proven himself to be a prophet. Los Angeles is the city of the 21st century and probably the 22nd century too. The people who come to Los Angeles, the people who live in Los Angeles, the people who come to downtown, the people who live in downtown, need these amenities. It is absolutely critical. The situation we have now has been a critical public health problem for over 10 years at this point and as part of the puzzle of creating the beautiful Los Angeles that we're here to create, that Ray referred to, I'm absolutely in support of moving ahead with this project as quickly as possible. The time is now, the time is today and I would support the council moving ahead today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We'll now hear from Mort Allen, followed by Amy Forbes, and then Alonso Wickers, please.
My name is Mort Allen. I support what they're doing. I want to say that number one, I do real estate work with the quote "other bidder" and they are a union company. I don't think people should kick things around. They did back out because they weren't going to pay more than 80 million and so I think that you only got one company here to deal with. But what I do want to say is, I mean, I look at the number of lobbyists in the room here and you know that it's going to get passed because I've watched what's gone on. I will tell you this, that it just had better be within the city of Los Angeles and Mark, listen to me. We've had meetings. If this goes to the San Fernando Valley, you are guaranteed of the biggest secession fights you've ever seen. We feel in the valley, we don't want toilets on the street corners. You could have them downtown, you could have them in the city. Ventura Boulevard rents for over $4 a square foot. Every time they stick a shelter or one of these kiosk things in front of a store, the store goes vacant because what is common is you have a Hollywood video store and then they go and they put a Blockbuster video ad in front of that store and you can't have it on Ventura Boulevard. So if you do pass it, you got to know, plus if you've all looked at the 1914 succession annexation agreement, there's a question whether the valley can be bound for such a contract. The other point I want to make is, I think you should all catch one thing. We've been involved in this for a lot of years because we've got the same 1,300 old beat-up shelters that we had in 1982. We don't have telephones on them anymore, we don't have exterior lighting on them, the benches are now two-place instead of six-place, and they're not transit shelters, they're advertising kiosks. So you've got to see what you're actually offering the people and when it first started, it's the same contract. And the point I want to make is, it's now being changed from Infinity to Viacom. And I know the lobbyists have all told you this, I know they're honest, and I'm sure you've all read the papers that, let me give it to you here. Viacom has 129,000 asbestos lawsuits against them. The first one was just settled for $30 million. Their stock has gone tailwind, I have these articles for you. The president, Mel Karmazan, just sold a million and a half shares of the stock because of what's happening. So I think that if you are going to go ahead with the contract, you better get a personal guarantee from Summer Redstone, the owner of it, and not go for this because, I don't know of one company in this country that survived the mass asphalt, asbestos lawsuits. You got to understand, Viacom is Westinghouse Electric, that was the company, and every old electric motor had asbestos in it. And it went from that to CBS to Viacom now. So leave it in Infinity, that's a rich company, but don't look to sneak it over. And all I ask of you is that you do it for the city, you need it in the city. See if it works, come back in six months and do it for the valley. But I'm going to tell you, after what the little duck did yesterday, Akwakka, or whatever his name is...
Be careful.
In the valley with the campaign about, you know, saying mailers that they're building gambling casinos on Ventura Boulevard and if you elect a certain person, they'll be gambling. I mean, we've gone through a lot and right now, I think that you better be really careful with what you do in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will now hear from Amy Forbes, followed by Alonso Wickers IV. Ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Amy Forbes. I'm a partner in the real estate group of Gibson, Dunn &amp; Crutcher and I am here representing the second bidder, as everybody calls us, Adshell. But today, I don't want you to dismiss what I'm about to say out of hand because of that because in this connection, my client's interests and the city's interests are aligned. What we're here before you to do is to say, city, take a good look at this contract before you approve it and make sure that the promises that have been made to you in the RFP response are in fact in the contract that is now before you and we suggest that they are not. The speaker before mentioned that we have pointed out that if you apply an 8% discount rate, the value of the $150 million is reduced significantly. That was not to suggest that our contract is therefore better, in fact, is to suggest we can't tell if our contract is better because there are so many deducts and so many eventualities that could push the revenue way far in the future, at this point, it's impossible to tell which is the better contract. But what I can tell you is the statement that was made that the city has guaranteed $150 million unequivocally simply isn't true. If the city council exercises its prerogatives and turns down permits, the revenue associated with those structures will be deducted from the $150 million guarantee. In fact, the only amount that is absolutely guaranteed that cannot be reduced is a $2 million payment annually, which over the 20 years works out to a much lower number. So that would be $2 million over a 20-year period or $40 million over a 20-year period. And I can't tell you if that will come to pass, but I can tell you that this contract would permit that if the council exercises its prerogatives. There are numerous other places where the city is actually bearing revenue. The street furniture contract was supposed to be implemented at no expense to the city. However, the contract provides $150,000 cap for each group of five automatic public toilets. I don't know what a public toilet costs, but if it costs more than $30,000, the city's paying for it. In addition, there are numerous connection costs that the city has to pay for. The city is obligated under this contract to remove other street furniture currently in the street that is determined to quote interfere with this contract. An interference is defined as a revenue generating capacity. That removal must be done at city expense, which means the contractor can compel the city to spend money to remove competing billboards. We put a lot of these comments in writing, we actually have more, but I'd like to focus on another group of comments that I'm hopeful the city will also take notice of. Those are the fine prints. Everybody hates lawyers and I guess I understand why, but if you read the contract, and I'm sure very few of you have had the time to do so since it's only been available for a very short time, you'll see that in many cases, the language looks friendly and looks like it's protecting the city, but if you keep reading, it turns out that it doesn't. I'm just going to pick one because I know it was a hot button when we had a lot of testimony when the contracts were originally being considered. That's the repair and replacement of automatic public toilets. 15 of Appendix 1, for anybody who wants to follow along at home, says that the contractor shall respond to damage vandalism or graffiti around any automatic public toilet within four hours, but in no event more than 24 hours. So which is it, four hours or 24 hours? You get further in the section and it says, there's a provision that if the contractor doesn't do it, it says, "Subject to an extension for force majeure, if any APT is out of operation for 48 hours due to a failure of the contractor to respond to maintenance or repair, then the contractor is to pay $100 per day." But again, you have to read the fine print. A force majeure is defined as, among other things, a criminal act of third parties. Well, if the reason why the toilet's out of commission is because someone has vandalized it, that's a criminal act of a third party. So even though it looks like there's this requirement that if the toilet's not fixed in 48 hours, there's some harsh penalty of $100 a day, in fact, there's no penalty because it would fall within the force majeure clause. I'm picking them out at random, but I got lots of them. The default clause is one I'll pick on and then, yeah, I'll just say what our preference is, it cannot be done here today to take a good hard look at this contract. Our preference would be to send this to committee where a good sharp eye can be put on the contract. But under the default provision, the city sends a default notice, the contractor before it ever even has to fix the default, has a right to provide evidence that shows why they don't think there has been in fact a default. At that point, there's a hearing to be held whether there's even a default and there's no distinction made as to whether this was a monetary default, that is, they haven't paid something their city's owed, or some more technical default. Only after a hearing and a determination that in fact there's been a default, does the contractor even have to begin to cure the default.
Alright.
And has a reasonable period after that.
May I request then that you conclude?
I will attempt to conclude. The kicker is...
I beg your pardon?
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Even if the city calls the default and terminates the contract, the city must pay the contractor the fair market value of all outstanding street furniture or the contractor will take the furniture out of the streets. With that, all I can do is urge that this council take a responsible, hard look at this contract. Don't rush it at the 11th hour before the Christmas holidays. It's a 20-year contract and you want to make sure it's been done right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Last speaker before we close the public hearing will be Alonso Wickers and we have four members of the council wishing to be heard.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council.
My name is Alonso Wickers. On behalf of the Coalition of Print Media, representing the Los Angeles Times, the Los Angeles Daily News, La Opinión, the USA Today, LA Weekly, New Times, Los Angeles, Working World, Downtown News, the Wall Street Journal, and the New York Times. I'm here to address a very limited portion of the proposed ordinance that is before the council today, dealing with the street furniture revenue plan. In that ordinance, the term "street furniture" is defined to include many things, including modular news racks. The Coalition would ask the council remove the term "modular news racks" from the definition of street furniture in the Street Furniture Revenue Fund ordinance. We've been engaged in this process with both the city and others for the last year, addressing the modular news rack issues and news rack ordinance issues and throughout that time, it's been clear from the RFP, from the statements made by Viacom Deco and the city, that the modular news racks in this plan will not have third-party advertising on the back of them. However, the ordinance before the council today appears to contemplate modular news racks as part of the street furniture that would be used to generate revenue for the city. We are strongly opposed to that portion of this ordinance and would ask that that terminology be removed. It is, in a recent federal court case, a very similar provision of an Atlanta ordinance that required third-party advertising on the back of modular news racks was struck down as unconstitutional. In addition, courts have made clear that revenue gathered from news racks cannot be used for broader administrative purposes as this ordinance would appear to contemplate. So we simply ask today that in addressing the issues before the council and voting on these... on these matters, that with respect to that narrow issue in the ordinance before you, that you remove the term "modular news racks" and clarify this problem now. But also, just briefly note that in the summary that was provided by the CLA's office to the council, it suggests that the placement of the 100 modular news racks that would be part of the two-year rollout would be done in consultation with the publishing industry. We refer the council back to its July 24 meeting, in which it directed the CLA and Bureau of Street Services to, quote, "ensure the concurrence of the city and the publishers regarding modular news rack placement." And we would ask that the city make sure that, as this process goes forward, that the city council's directive from July is respected, and that the placement of this pilot program of modular news racks be done with the concurrence of the city and the publishing community. Thank you.
All right. That closes the public hearing on this matter. There are four persons wishing to be heard. We begin with Ms. Sikowski, followed by Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Weiss, in that order. Now, I see members of the staff wishing to come forward. Members of the council, you might want to state what your pleasure is, whether we want to hear a staff report or proceed with the speaker's list.
I think we should probably have a staff report first.
Is that the pleasure of the body? Mr. Deaton, proceed.
Well, what you have before you is the contract as requested by the council. We have been negotiating this for some time, and it's been approved by city attorney to form in legality. A couple of the issues raised were relative to the, on the, oh, I'll take the news racks first. All the contract does is allow us to buy them if, in the future, we choose to. There are no, it is not tied to any of the revenue numbers, it's not tied to any of the rollouts, et cetera. It will be dependent upon another, another process and arrangements by ordinance. There's no need. This does not require, dictate, or otherwise mandate anything, any use of them. It just allows us a way to purchase them. Second item, relative to the guarantee, the $150 million granted, the present value of that is not $150 million. The present value, the revenue to be obtained under the contract is not 100, is not, this has to be discounted according to the cash flow that is there, and it responds accordingly. What it means is a dollar today is worth more than a dollar 20 years from now. And a dollar a year today is worth a dollar. A dollar either in terms of a guarantee or the revenue that will be obtained from advertising is not the same value. It has to be discounted today. With prime rate being 2%, it's not much, but if you discounted that, then the numbers that are presented in the presentation are roughly correct. And both vendors, nobody came to us and suggested they were going to give us 50 or 100 million dollars in day one. Otherwise, we would be discussing their contract instead of the one we are discussing. On the $150 million, the proposals have to first be approved by the council member of the district, and then it begins through the process. It is obvious, at least to me, that if all 15 council members say no on every proposal, there will be no revenue, and at some point, this won't work. It is, however, the absolute right to do that, and to, and they have the responsibility to provide the $150 million in the schedule provided. We are assuming that a certain number of those will be approved, and it will generate the revenue necessary in order to produce the kinds of money necessary to meet the projections on the guarantee. As it relates to the issue of surroundings, freestanding advertising, our view, city attorneys' view, is that the amenities involved, except for computers, which are limited to the number included in the contract, but recycling bins, traffic, excuse me, trash, maps, et cetera, are all an option on every freestanding, freestanding kiosk that we put in the street or in the sidewalk. I have a letter from them clarifying that that's their understanding as well, and I feel that that is what we have in the contract. We've also included in our recommendation staff for street services. One of the problems in the past, we believe, has been inadequate review by the city, inadequate staff to provide the kinds of oversight of the whole process, and that has created problems both in maintenance and location, et cetera. So we have provided street services with the staff necessary to carry that forward. As it relates to the, the city attorney can respond to the questions relative to what happens at the end of 20 years and the default provisions. My understanding is those are the standard provisions that probably works within their contracts, and we've used them accordingly. And the city attorney can give you the backup on whether or not those have worked in the past. Accordingly, we recommend you move approval today.
All right. We will proceed with the speaker's list. I recognize Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, I want to-
Ms. Sikowski, I think Mr. Pacheco has a point of order.
Mr. President, as the maker of the original motion, which introduced this whole item, I would like to invoke my privilege to speak first on the matter.
All right.
Under the council rules.
Ms. Ryan Travis, Mr. Pacheco, an order?
Colleagues and Mr. President, are you ready, Mr. President?
The city attorney wishes to speak to your intervention.
Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Oh, no. I was simply invoking, under the council rules, that as the maker of the motion, I speak first on the item as it's being reported by the CLA. This is a report that originates out of a motion that Councilmember Walters and I introduced, I don't know, a year ago? Ms. Ozawa, when was the motion introduced? A year ago?
It was introduced, I believe, in November of 1999.
November 1999.
I guess the more apt question might be, is it the same motion?
The maker of the motion was Ms. Walters, the second one was Mr. Fuhr.
I see.
But-
That's not the motion I introduced, so I'm not sure. Pardon?
All right. Only because of the courtesy of a colleague who's feeling deferential, Mr. Pacheco, are you afforded the opportunity to proceed.
I want to commend my colleague for collegiality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to focus the discussion on one matter. When we introduced the motion, at least the one I can only speak of, is the one that I introduced with Ms. Walters, the focus of this whole project was not a money-making venture. So the comments regarding 40 million versus 150 million, although meritorious in terms of the impact, the whole goal is about quality of life, bringing quality of life into our downtown areas specifically for the homeless, bringing quality of life for our tourists in certain areas of the city. And once again, I will take this as an opportunity to simply take advantage of anyone's reluctance to have a self-cleaning pay toilet in the district, that feel free to volunteer those for Council District 14. I will more than willingly take your share and use them accordingly in my district. So if that's the reason why you're going to vote no, please do not. Support the project. You don't want them, fine, I'll take them. I'm sure my colleague at City Nine will take them. We are very much looking forward to implementing this program, because we think it will be good for the city of Los Angeles from the standpoint of improving the quality of life of not only our residents, but anyone who visits the city. And these secondary issues regarding the money-making side of it really should take second share to the goals of what we're trying to do here. And that's all I want to say regarding this, and I would urge your support of the entire matter. And just so that we're on the same playing field, I want to move to include, as part of the discussion, both 48A and B as part of the entire motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco, members of the council. I think that's properly interpreted as a preemptive strike. Ms. Sikowski.
I appreciate Mr. Pacheco's inclusion of motion 48B in particular, since I'm the maker of that motion. But I want to, first of all, I agree with what Mr. Pacheco said, and I was earlier on as member of Public Works Committee and then a Public Safety Committee, recognizing the importance of an element in this contract, and that is the self-cleaning pay toilets and the necessity to have them in certain areas of the city where there are no other available venues or places for people to use what they need to use. We folded into that a much broader program and a much broader contract. And I was a member of this council that approved and recommended the RFP to go out. I was a member of this council who approved and recommended the selection of the bidder who received the bid with whom the negotiation has occurred. I have some concerns, and I think this may be a lengthy session if we go through all of those concerns, which is why I had suggested and believed that the best place for this contract would have been to be referred to committee, as I think was suggested by one of the speakers. Not to say to do it in, but to answer and look at and analyze some of the issues and the questions, some of which are legitimate and some are not, some of which I want to bring up today. Members of the council, we have a transit shelter program in the city. We have a transit shelter program that says the shelter provider who gets advertising on those shelters is obligated to improve them, deal with vandalism, deal with the graffiti, deal with the conditions which are not well-maintained. And yet, we don't have that being done. We are entering into a new contract, and we are getting assurances, just as we got assurances before, just as we got assurances about five years ago, when we renewed a whole bus bench program with all the promises by the bus bench provider that it would be taken care of, by all the promises by the city attorney and the Street Services Bureau, that this was ironclad, this was good, this was going to work. It's not working. So we need to know where and how we need to change that. Let me give you just a couple of examples of concerns that I have. We've been told again and again that each council person has the ultimate veto authority or power to say no to any one of these devices, whether it's a pay toilet, whether it's a transit shelter, whether it's the kiosk, whether whatever. And yet, we are also told that this is going to be revenue generating. I think perhaps one of the most true statements that is, was submitted today was by one of the attorneys representing the applicant or the bidding company, which says, "This really is essentially quid pro quo. If the city fails to issue permits for revenue furniture, the benefits cannot be required and will not be paid." And that's fair. It's a quid pro quo. That's what's in the contract. But if I were to ask you, how often, how many vetoes can a council person exercise before that company comes and says, "We don't have enough revenue"? Or what if the revenue being allowed in certain districts is in areas where they won't generate a lot of revenue? They can sell it, but they're not going to sell it at the rates they want to, because some of the primary sites, the primary corridors, the primary areas that they really want to saturate, is where those council members, those neighborhood councils, those communities, those specific plans, those historic overlays, districts say, "No, not here." And you, but you can go, and you can have as many as you want in these other areas where there is an objection, but where we don't think you're going to want the revenue. What happens in the contract there, Mr. City Attorney? What is the break even, the balance point?
Would you like me to answer that question?
Yes.
Christopher Westhoff, Assistant City Attorney, Public Works General Counsel. The minimum that the city will receive, if the city council approves not one single additional ad panel, the minimum that the city receives is the $2 million per year. Plus, they are required, regardless of approval of ad panels, to install the first 15 APTs, which are the automated public toilets, which is a capital expenditure of some $4 million, $4 million, because they're approximately a quarter of a million dollars apiece. So it's a very minimum. If the city does nothing more than leave 1,215 current bus shelters out there on the street and approves not one single additional piece of street furniture, the city will continue to receive $2 million per year, and it will receive the 15 APTs. And you are right, councilwoman, the, obviously, this is a quid pro quo. The only way that this company can guarantee the $150 million to the city is if they generate revenue to pay for our $150 million. Their 80 million capital expenditure to install the furniture and all of the additional ongoing costs year to year to maintain the toilets and to maintain the bus shelters as well as the kiosks. So you're right, there is a quid pro quo. And if, and as Mr. Deaton pointed out, if you don't approve it, obviously, this isn't going to work in terms of what our best-case scenario is, which is, we approve the furniture at some point, they install all of the required street furniture set forth, and we receive the $150 million.
What about, on the default provision, what about the issue which says that they must maintain these, and yet, the force majeure clause says it's an act of vandalism, that doesn't count? When in fact, almost everything that would be not well-maintained would be by way vandalism.
Correct. And I think, I think we could invite, you know, the representatives from the company. But they are required to take care of vandalism. That is not an exercise of the force majeure clause in terms of their maintenance. There is one out that they get on APTs, and it's a small one, and that is, if in two consecutive years, if vandalism is done to an APT in excess of $5,000 in year one, and it's in excess of $5,000 in year two, and they come to us with a reasonable request to relocate that APT, that is the one out that they have. If there is just a location where they cannot prevent excessive vandalism, they get to ask us to relocate that APT at their cost. That's the only out they have in this contract relative to vandalism.
All right.
Okay. Mr. President, I can just also add in the reference that Mr. Pacheco indicated to motion 48B, which I am going to introduce, which asks for a number of things. One, that as the contractor would look to submit to the council office, any area, any location, that they submit along with that location, sort of the whole of the location, where there might be specific plans, where there might be historical preservation overlay zones, targeted neighborhood initiatives, scenic parkways, pedestrian-oriented districts, transit-oriented districts, et cetera.
Is that being circulated, Ms. Sikowski?
Yes, it is. It's on the desk. The second provision of this is also to ask that if a council person requests or a neighborhood council requests that the contractor, as they might be looking to put some of these devices, street furniture, in certain neighborhoods, that they come and talk to the neighborhood council about it, so that the neighborhood council has that review. And that also that we have a yearly review by the city attorney and the appropriate agencies about contract compliance. Right now, the contract says we would not look at it again for six years. That would be the first time it would come up for review, and I think that's far too long to have this out there without some review, some hold, some measure of monitoring. So that is the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Mr. Zine. Mr. Deaton, you wish to have a brief intervention?
I'd just like to say we support that recommendation. We think that it would be good for the contractor to come in and give an overall plan for an area and give a kind of a vision of where they would have in mind. And we wouldn't be going around and around on one location. We could be talking about areas.
Members of the council, make note of the acceptance of the recommendation by the staff, and we'll proceed. But the speakers will this be Mr. Zine? It's up now, Mr. Weiss to follow. Ms. Perry-Garcetti-Holden, in that order. Proceed, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I'd like to begin with motion item 48A. I know we're adding a lot to this painstaking task, but in the provision, it states that the corporation would remove one at their expense, and any others to be removed would be at the expense of the city of Los Angeles. And I've added a motion, 48A, to correct that, to require that if a street furniture has to be relocated, it will be at the expense, not of the city of Los Angeles, as in the initial agreement. And this would be based upon primary health problems at the location, where a reasonable effort to alleviate the problem at the location has not succeeded, and the ultimate has to be removed. Currently, it states that they'll only do one a year. This would require, if there's more than one a year, up to 15 or whatever the number, they would incur that cost and not the city of Los Angeles. That is item 48A. And whatever we need to do to include that, along with Councilmember Sikowski's motion. A couple other issues I have a question- A couple other issues I have a question, the veto by a council member. If, for example, in a council district, they don't want any, and other council districts want more than whatever is originally allocated, does that have any negative impact on the agreement, the dollars to come back to the City of Los Angeles? In other words, is there some requirement that this has to be citywide in each council district if a council member says, "No, I don't want it"?
Councilmember, with the APTs, the city controls the absolute location where the toilets go, so we have 100% control over that, subject to, if we want to put one up on Mount Wilson and there's no plumbing, that might be a problem. But in terms of the location within the council districts, 150 could go in a single council district with the APTs, and that would not cause a problem. The revenue-generating street furniture, meaning the bus shelters with revenue, and there are non-revenue generating that are also available, and then the kiosks, which are also revenue generating because there are ads on them, there will be a process, but nothing can be put in a council district without the council member signing off on the permit. So in reality, there is a veto. It's obviously set up to be a cooperative process between the company and the city to maximize it, because we get 20% of gross revenue. So if we maximize revenue to them, we're going to make more than the $150 million. So it's in the city's best interest. However, each council member will have the right at any time to say, "No, I don't want it to go there, but you can put one over here." There is a give and take that's going to take place. That could affect revenue.
I understand the revenue part. My concern is that with neighborhood councils coming online and the council member wanting to make the community happy and agree with the community's needs and concerns, if that specific council member in that specific district says no, that cannot be overridden by the body of the council. There's no -- that is if the council member has the ultimate decision and final's answer.
Correct. Unless his council passes a motion which requires all council districts to do something, the contract does not allow any of the council to override any other council member's decision on the location of any piece of street furniture.
Okay. And I understand that there's also inclusion on emergency lights or some emergency notification on 100 of the locations.
There are emergency telephones or emergency notification that they will be providing at their cost to us. In the APTs, there are also -- it's separate from what would be available in the toilets themselves, and there will be monitoring, remote monitoring available in the toilets as well. But these would be emergency phones that you see routinely on college campuses now where, you know, that are lit, and that somebody could go if they had an emergency. That was something that was, we had been thinking about in the bus shelter program a number of years ago, and it was integrated into this program.
Okay. I did visit, and I was an original no vote on this when it came before the council. I did take a trip up to San Francisco on a Sunday and visited the APTs and the establishment up in that arena. And I noticed that on a Sunday, they had maintenance crews out, they're doing regular maintenance, which I asked, "They're doing this on a Sunday?", and they said, "Yes, they were." And I used one of the facilities, and it resolved a lot of the issues that I had regarding it. I still have the concern about what my community wants, what the business district wants, but as far as the effectiveness, as far as the convenience for the population down on the wharf, there were many people that were using the facility. So I think that for the skeptics, and I was originally a skeptic, at least that's part of it, it's convinced me that there is a benefit to the public, and I know in certain council districts that are probably more beneficial than others, and certain tourist sites are more beneficial than others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and we appreciate you sparing us any further detail of your adventures. All right. May I just simply say, there's a matter of urgency, and if you'll permit for just one moment, Mr. Weiss, let's hear from the city attorney with respect to a special that needs to be dealt with, and/or the clerk.
My understanding is that the special council meeting should be called to order because this needs to be approved by the mayor. The mayor will be leaving very shortly from the city, but not from the state.
All right. If there's no objection, we will then suspend the rules, proceed with the urgency that's before us. Mr. Clerk, how shall we then proceed?
Recede this current meeting and then call to order the special meeting.
Without objection, that will be the order.
Berndt, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Labange, Mosakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reas, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla, 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
All right. Then proceed to the item before us, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is an item for which public hearing has not been held. It's communications from the CAO, CLA, and city attorney relative to transmittals to LAFCO regarding harbor and valley areas secession proposals.
All right. The matter is before us, members of the council. I note that Ms. Mosakowski wishes to be heard. Ma'am, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, this is the item one that was just shown here, is the communication that was prepared by the city administrative officer, the chief legislative analyst, and the city attorney regarding the transmittal of the CAO report regarding the draft comprehensive fiscal analysis related to the special reorganization studies. This was a report that was done in October and transmitted as the CAO, but the mayor has asked the council to affirm it, and the mayor would like to transmit it formally. It's been informally transmitted to LAFCO, and so this is just that action, and the mayor has asked that we do it quickly so that he can sign it before he leaves the building today. So I would move the rule.
It's been properly moved. I see no one else wishing to be heard at this point. That usually signals that we are prepared to proceed. Mr. Deaton, you wish to be heard?
I just think that it -- two things. One is that the cash flow evaluation, which is also being a consultant that we hired, and I think it's relevant, and the council should know that the consultant's view is that the new city, New Valley City, if it was incorporated, in the first year would have a $200 million shortfall because of cash flow purposes, the way the taxes come into the city, timing-wise, et cetera. Secondly, that in the process that we're going through in negotiations currently, we're involved in terms and conditions of potential secession. Our intent is to negotiate through those terms and conditions between now and probably the end of February, and that I think LAFCO's understanding is, or interest is, is that we would then also proceed to talk about a revenue neutrality agreement or some arrangement relative to the entire package. We are going to indicate we're not going to negotiate that element until we know what the outcomes of terms and conditions, et cetera, are, and we'll be reporting back to you in January on the progress of that. But I just thought you should be aware of the significance, especially of the cash flow.
Appreciate this, Mr. Fugio.
And what those points stated by Mr. Deaton, we're also asking LAFCO to take into consideration, when they deal with the issue of fiscal viability and revenue neutrality, those two points, it's extremely critical.
Members of the council, you've heard from the representative to LAFCO, you've heard from the CLA and the CAO. There's no other member wishing to be heard at this point. Therefore, Mr. Clerk, if you would open the roll on the matter. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very kindly forthwith on that. We shall now adjourn the special session and reconvene at our regularly scheduled meeting. We were in the midst of the council members being heard, and Madam Clerk, if you would post up the speaker's list, you'll note that the inevitable representative of the 5th District is about to be heard, and we wish for the entirety of the chambers to be silent. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, before I state my position, I do want to make it very clear that I understand full well the motivations behind the people who have brought this proposal forward. They are well-intentioned, they're trying to serve an important public policy principle, and I do know how hard the CLA's office has worked on this negotiation, and it likewise has worked in good faith and has produced a good, solid product. I have concerns on a public policy level with what we're doing here, because, colleagues, what we're doing here, very simply, is selling ads on the back of this city. And if we've done it before, I'd like to know, because to the best of my knowledge...
The bus shelter program is funded the same exact way.
Okay. But this is the edge of the wedge. I mean, this is going to open the door to more requests to sell ads on the back of the city and to use the revenues for other purposes. I mean, just the other day in our budget and finance committee, there was a proposal put forward by a colleague of ours, a well-intentioned, very logical proposal that said, "Hey, we're going to be selling ads in neighborhoods for this program, why don't we use it for this other purpose? We are going to open a Pandora's Box here by doing this." And at this time, where we have an explosion of billboards, an explosion of illegal signs, an explosion of visual blight in this city, to add to that clutter, to add to those panoply of signs throughout the city by selling ads on city facilities, and by doing that, to, in my belief, facilitate the commission of quality-of-life crimes, which in turn will make certain neighborhoods more rather than less dangerous, is a mistake. I think we need to be honest about what we're doing and why we're doing it. Now, I said a few months ago, when I first got to this council, when this matter was placed before us, if this is such a good program, why don't we do it as a pilot program? Not a 20-year program with an out, but a one- or a two-year program in a limited part of the city, and then we can buy in later. I have never understood why we couldn't insist on that if we wanted to. If we don't want to, that's a public policy decision. But I think doing a pilot program would enable us certainly to study the impact on quality-of-life crimes, and then see whether other neighborhoods ought to be concerned about having these sort of facilities come into their neighborhoods. That's how I would have proceeded. I do understand why folks have proceeded otherwise, in another way, but the proposal that's before us today, I don't find acceptable, and I will oppose it.
All right. The chair now recognizes Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. I wanted to stand and speak because I, too, have gone to San Francisco to see the toilets. And once I got to see them, I was convinced that this was an extraordinary opportunity for me in the 9th Council District, because my council district is the district that has the highest number of people who are homeless and shelter-resistant. Those are people who will not go into shelters. One of the first problems I was confronted with once being sworn in was the amount of human waste on the street. And the city now has a chemical toilet program in place, which, I don't know if you've seen them, but I consider them to be nearly a failure. They are not fit for human use in most cases. This provides me with an extraordinary opportunity to confront a significant social problem in the 9th Council District. It also provides me with an opportunity to serve my constituents who are transit-dependent and have to take the bus to and from, pick up their children, go grocery shopping, and often shop and buy food and things that they need for their families in areas where there are no public toilet facilities whatsoever. It also gives me a great opportunity to revitalize commercial corridors, not only for tourists but for shoppers. Those commercial corridors, not necessarily in the central business district, but areas such as the fashion district, the jewelry district, where they are emerging strong local economies and, again, attract a lot of people, and there are not a lot of public toilet facilities in those areas. So I'm going to support this today, and for any of the council districts that do not wish to take these toilets, I join with Mr. Pacheco. We'll probably be fighting over the toilets. All right, Eric wants to join now, too. All right, well, Nick and I want the extra toilets. Anybody who doesn't want a toilet, we will take them and put them to good use.
Thank you. We now have a new triumvirate, Perry, Pacheco, Garcetti. And now, it is your opportunity to be heard, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hold on, talk of triumvirate, it's confused me. A couple questions. One thing before a question, which I feel a need to state for the record in terms of how this deal has been cut, and it's probably not the politically wisest thing to do with my colleagues, but the half of this, which essentially goes to us under our discretion, four badly needed things, don't get me wrong, it's not a slush fund, it is stuff that allows us to direct beautification projects within our districts, which we all know are badly needed. I think that we need to look long and hard at that aspect of whether or not there are certain priorities, especially in a tough budget year like this, but thinking down the line in the future, whether or not some of that money needs to be dedicated elsewhere, not just the remaining half, which, for instance, Mr. Pacheco has introduced a motion to talk about directing towards neighborhood prosecution, but even some of that half itself. This is asking us to look at sacrificing our potential future discretionary money. And I would invite my colleagues to begin to look at that in the future as we see how this money is spent. Certainly, issues like housing, issues like the neighborhood prosecution program that Mr. Pacheco has talked about are very important, and we have very few new streams of funding coming in. Just need to state that for the record. Secondly, I wanted to just be clear, if we have this, the trading that goes on between districts, this could, depending on what districts get them, reduce the overall revenue, because the revenue is pegged by the geography. Is that correct?
It's a function of what you're trading. Quite frankly, I think that you have three components. One is the transit shelters. The transit shelters, we're going to, as the story, we've been on ridership, been with consultation with MTA and bus routes, et cetera, and we have, that's been the thrust of how we've attempted to locate those. As it relates to the street furniture, the kiosks, et cetera, where they're located obviously has a lot to do with their value and the amount of revenue stream coming to the city and to the contractor. And that's, in many cases, will be the most controversial aspect of this, and I doubt that there's going to be an overwhelming desire to trade that. In other words, I'll trade you two kiosks or something along those lines. As it relates to where the location of the toilets are...
Chair, can you retain the balance of my time? I'm sorry for not asking for that. It's about to run out.
The location of the toilets has nothing to do with revenue. Those are not revenue-producing items and amenities. We're going to try to put those in the areas that, people that want, you know, individual council members that want them, and those in the areas of needs. And I think, as Mr. Zine has indicated, for the most part, tourist areas and homeless areas probably are the higher priorities, but not the only ones. Quite frankly, I have, everybody's comparing notes on use of these. I have used them both in San Jose and San Francisco. There are different kinds of locations in both those cities, but in both cases, they are very handy and very helpful as a tourist, not, didn't consider myself homeless.
You enjoyed your experience.
More or less.
To note.
As Mr. Greely, Thomas, I don't think any further details are required.
You got that right. Proceed, sir.
Thank you. Also, just one thing for the record, too, is my worry here is that we have certain areas of the city in which there is more signage than others. Those have traditionally been our poor and more disempowered areas. While we certainly want to attract public amenities precisely because we have homeless populations in places like Hollywood and downtown, we also find ourselves then in the situation where we're attracting even more signage, we're trading that away in certain areas that are, you know, already better off in terms of their aesthetics, stay better off, and those that are worse continue to get even worse. So that's kind of a situation that we're stuck in.
Well, the response to that is that the, I'm not speaking for the contractor, but in this particular instance, I think I can come close, they will do everything in their power to locate it in the 5th District, in the 11th District, and some other areas in the city. So I...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Labange and Ms. Mosakowski for a second time.
Do we need 12 votes for the decision to pass?
Just eight, Mr. Holden.
All right, well, you might have eight. I just want to say that, one question, why'd you change the name from Infinity to Viacom?
Viacom, Infinity was a subsidiary of Viacom, and they just basically, it was, they are using Viacom as their name. They're actually still marketing in some instances.
Under the same umbrella organization?
Correct, correct. Viacom owned Infinity Outdoor Systems.
Okay. Now, I've been informed, I've not read all this, I haven't read any of it.
Shame on you, Mr. Holden.
This is the contract.
Well, part of it's the contract, part of it is a report, and part of it are some attachments.
The report's on top. That's a contract.
There's about a 40 or so-page contract, and then there are attachments to the contract.
This is a contract. This is a contract. And the fact of the matter is that, it's just not clear to me and some of the other people here, that we're on target. Now, to respond to Ms. Perry, let me just say, if I had to vote today, which street furniture was the best, I liked this street furniture. But it's, that's not what we're discussing. We're discussing the contract with Viacom. And we have to know what we're doing and what the consequence is going to be. And if I were at Viacom, when you're in there about neighborhood council and so on and so on, how can they still guarantee you $2 million per year? How can you ever expect to get to $150 million bucks? That's just, those are just numbers. And you're not going to have anything in the contract to say, give us any assurance against, guarantee, that you're ever going to arrive at $150 million. And so, it sounds good, but I don't want to vote on something that just sounds good. It's a good toilet, fine, I'll sign off on that. What a pilot program denied, did you have no problem with that? But I would say to you, that there's some clauses, I'm sure, in this contract that should be reviewed. So there's a clear understanding on the part of the contractor and the city, where everybody's being treated fairly. I think the contractor would like to have this done today, but there can be some show coming for them, they'll come back and wanting to renegotiate, and say, we got a problem, we got a problem there. I'd like to clarify all those things. Something like this, I don't know why I didn't, should have gone to committee, it should have been worked out in detail. And it probably should go there, okay? As I said, if I was going to vote, I already decided which street furniture that I'm in favor, supportive of, I'm in support of this street furniture. I'm concerned about the newspapers, LA Times, the best lawyers in the world. The fact of the matter, they have some concern with the news racks and the other distribution of newspapers, they have concerns as well. And you sit there, you tell me, well, I got that all worked out. I'm not sure about that. I mean, we had some many flaw, you had 20 iterations of the Staples Center, 20 of them. You had a good agreement, then another good agreement, another good agreement, and the list went on. But at the same time, we finally had to review all those agreements, and still have some problems associated with it.
Does it look pretty good today?
Even though I go there to bed-
Does it look pretty good today?
I go to the basketball game, and I close my eyes and hold my-
Does it look pretty good today, Mr. Holden?
It looks good, but I can tell you-
And it didn't cost us anything?
Yeah, but the convention center is losing money in the pocket. Now, don't get into that right now, and this is-
That's not entirely true, but we'll-
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
I like the word entirely true, but true in some parts. So that's the point of making, if it's true in any part, it's true. So what I'm saying is that I cannot vote on this today unless it have more hearings, and I get a chance to review it and critique it.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise and support this. I remember years ago, talking to John Ferraro about this type of furniture, this type of opportunity that exists in cities that I traveled on the days when I took vacation to see many of our sister cities. And I think it's very important to try to have this, to advance this now, especially in areas that are needed in the city. Also, in that same time period, there used to be four corners and gas stations on every corner, and a restroom in every one of those gas stations. But they're all erased, they're all erased now, so there's a great need here that we need to move ahead on. We need to move ahead on so that we could improve the quality of the street, the quality opportunity for people to see life in the street. And we've done a great jobs in some neighborhoods, but we've got to do greater jobs, and this type of street furniture will bring that to our boulevards. And we do have the ability, as council members and with our staff, to exercise what we would like to see in those districts in the neighborhood. And I really will tell you again, which I mentioned on Wednesday, which I greatly enjoyed, the meeting at the, in Wilmington, as I drove down San Pedro and saw the work on San Pedro Street, and all the way down through Avalon Boulevard, as it connects down through to the Port of Los Angeles, you see certain neighborhoods have certain bright spots, because people taking interested things on the street. We want people on the street, street life will help create neighborhoods and create that little neighborhood commerce, because much in the heart of the city is that neighborhood commerce, that you do go down San Pedro Street all the way to the Port of Los Angeles, you will see neighborhood commerce, and we will see that spurred and an interest with the kiosks and other items of street furniture to heighten the spirit of neighborhood. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Ms. Miskowski, followed by Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Zine for the second time, all three speakers. Ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was an issue that I just wanted the city attorney to address. Members of the councils, you know, we had had a law in this city on billboard advertising, particularly in certain areas near schools, et cetera. We had attempted to say not only no tobacco advertising, but no liquor advertising. We learned subsequently in a related case across the country, I think it was in Maryland or Massachusetts, that we, as a government, could not control advertising content, and therefore, we could not preclude liquor advertising. And I wanted to ask the city attorney, how we resolve that, can we resolve that in this issue, what protection might we have, and how far might we be able to take it if we are precluded from, as a governmental position, enforcing that?
Thank you. Well, as the council is well aware, the First Amendment restricts a lot of prior restraints that government might wish to place on certain speech. However, in this particular instance, what we did, included in the RFP, was a request that the proposers proposed to us their requirements for receiving advertising. And we made that a part of their submission to us, and it is a part of their requirement, they have to comply with their corporate standard that they bid to us. And in this particular instance, I believe it provides us with the protections that we are looking for relative to tobacco and other types of questionable advertising in relation to schools and other sensitive areas. So we do have the protection that this particular entity will be adhering to their corporate policy, which they have proposed to us, and we have incorporated into the contract.
Okay, and members of the council, I just want everyone to be clear, it's interesting, at one point, I think Mr. Westhoff pointed to the contract, that's what we're approving today. My staff asked, where in this contract does it say the council members have a veto power? Members of council, it's not in this contract. It is in the additional document, which is the appendix. If that was so important, I thought it should have been, could have been moved up. But here it is, let me read it to you, because where the veto power is referenced is entirely dependent on the contractor. It says, "The contractor will submit a list of the proposed sites, including written notification to the council member." That's the contractor. And this is not submitted to the council member, it's submitted to the Board of Public Works. And then, the contractor is supposed to provide certification that the council member has no unresolved objections to the proposed location. That is the language in the contract that says we have veto power. The contractor is talking to Board of Public Works, the contractor says he submitted a letter to the council member, the contractor certifies that the council member has no objections. That's the veto power. Now, obviously, it's going to be behooving each of us to have very, very good and attentive staff to watch these letters come through, to watch what's going on in the Board of Public Works, as they approve a lot of these with these certifications that council members in each of the 15 districts either object or don't object. But that's the veto part, it doesn't come to us officially in any manners we know it, doesn't come through committees. It's the contractor's obligation to let us know and to let the Board of Public Works know that the council member has no objection. That is in the appendix of the contract that is our veto power.
Actually, and the appendix is an active part of the contract, they have to comply with all the terms and conditions of the appendix. What the contract requires is that they not, that they cannot place a piece of street furniture without having a prior approved permit from the City of Los Angeles. Staff, then, this is a process, by the way, that has been in existence for the last six years with our bus shelter program, and has led it to date with no problems. Every piece of furniture that's been installed, every bus shelter that has been installed has been installed pursuant to the same process over the last six years with the approval of the council person. Obviously, if staff has a question about whether or not a site is approved, they pick up the telephone and they call the council office. But you can understand if this particular contractor brings to the Department of Public Works a permit where they say they have received the approval of the council office, and they have not received the approval of the council office, in my mind, that puts them in breach of this contract.
All right, we now will hear from council member Janice Han for the first time. Ms. Han?
Thank you. This is one of those times when, actually, I'm glad we've been having this discussion on the floor, and I, even though we're tired and it's been a lengthy council meeting, I think this is almost more important to discuss it here in public amongst all of us than even really to send it back to committee, because I think a lot of these concerns, we needed to hear publicly and hear the answers publicly, and that those watching Channel 35 could also be a part of this exploration of this contract. But it is ultimately one of those things, in my opinion, that I'm going to, I certainly haven't had the opportunity to read the 40-page contract myself or the appendix, but I do trust that our city attorney, Mr. Deaton, I trust you on this one, that you actually believe that this is a good deal for us. And Ms. Miskowski, I really appreciate your motion, particularly item two, that says, prior to any submission of applications for permit approval, the contractor shall be required to appear before any neighborhood council or other such community group as requested by the council member. So I'm trying to figure out the chronological order of how this would happen based on what you just read, but I'm assuming that now, before you actually, the contractor applies for a permit for the actual placement of the street furniture, seems to me at that point, they must come to the council member-
Correct.
-and ask whether or not there are any community groups that they need to go before, and that then will translate to whether or not the council member approves or disapproves. So I think that is a great addition to this entire contract and to this discussion, and as you know, that's where I believe the real accountability is in anything we do, and that's before our newly-created neighborhood councils.
Just a comment-
And let me just say, one of the things that I had asked for, and I believe, again, I haven't read the contract, but I was concerned that anybody wanting to report any maintenance problems or any graffiti problems would actually have a toll-free 800 number, I want to make sure that that is a part of this.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move to the next speaker, who is Mr. Nick Pacheco.
Go ahead, Mr. If the point that Councilwoman Miskowski raised, as far as it being a positive approval by the council as opposed to the contractor certifying, if the council would feel more at ease, we can, if you so direct, we can make that a positive one, so I will assume, fine, that has no problem.
All right, thank you. Mr. Deaton moves to co-op the opposition. Proceed, Mr. Pacheco.
I'd like to move the previous question on the entire matter as amended, including the most recent amendment.
Now, we do have one speaker remaining to be heard, who is Mr. Dennis Zine. One speaker remaining.
It's only five after three, it's still light outside.
I just have a couple of quick ones. And I just want to make sure we covered this last comment that you made. The issue of the notification going directly to the council member, it goes to Public Works, there's got to be some independent notification to the council office, as stated in item 48B by Councilmember Miskowski, where the council member would ask that it go before neighborhood council. Well, if we don't know about it, we're not going to be able to make that request. We need to somehow include in there that when they want to have a site, we're independently notified regardless of Public Works.
Right, it goes to you first.
That's going to be included?
All right, that's one.
Okay, number two, if the business is sold, if Infinity is sold to someone else, this contract is binding for that 20 years, correct?
We have the right of approval of any successor.
Okay.
But if we approve a successor, yes, it is binding for 20.
And I know we're trying to make sure all these loopholes are plugged, because as it gets down the road, they'll say, well, this wasn't covered, and that's why I think we're laboring this point. And then, another question regarding advertising, there's some very provocative advertisements taking place in my district. I know we talk about alcohol and tobacco, but with these gentleman clubs sparking up in the city, there's some very provocative advertising that's causing great concern for some of our residents, and hopefully, that would also be included in this with the tobacco and the alcohol. It's not, shall we say, in good taste.
Correct, and I think that's how it's stated, I can't quote what their corporate policy is, but it's my understanding that that would cover that. Obviously, again, you run smack dab into the First Amendment, and we cannot require certain types of situations, because it would be a prior restraint on free speech. But their corporate policy, I believe, covers that type of advertising. And if you look at our bus shelters, you don't see that type of, most of them are movies, and that seems to be the product. And so, we would assume that that would continue to be where they would go in their corporate policy. They know they need to keep this council happy, or this council's not going to put street furniture out on the street. So they know that they've got to meet your standards, so I'm not worried that that's going to be met by their corporate policy.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Deaton, just one last comment. Another, one of my great experiences was street vendors. As a result of that, Street Services has put together a manual about the process that has gone through, et cetera. We will make sure that they do the same for this, so there is an understanding exactly of the process and in cooperation with the contractor, so there's visibility on exactly how this works. All right, thank you very much. There's no other member wishing to be heard. We've had a public hearing, and that has been concluded, consistent with the governing statutes that determine that piece of business. Mr. Clerk, I think we are ready to dispose of this matter. We have 48A, 48B, and Ms. Han, yours would essentially be a 48C, but for the benefit of the clerk and the members of the council, we need to hear it. Ms. Han, did you have an amending motion?
It was Mr. Deaton's suggestion, I believe, that there be a positive that it'd have to require council approval.
That was in response to Ms. Miskowski. Don't confuse us, Mr.-
A positive to count?
I'm-
Mine had to do, something with the order in which it would come to the council member, so that the council member could act on 48B and direct the contractor to appear before neighborhood council.
Councilwoman, before they can even bring it to Public Works, they have to get the council office to sign off. So before they can even submit the application to the Department of Public Works, it lays out in the appendix the process that they have to follow, and one of those is sign off from the council office that there are no objections.
So I don't know that we are-
It exists in the current document.
We're not at an additional amendment, Mr. Clerk. We have 48A, 48B, and then we'll dispose of the entirety of the matter. All members clear at this point?
On amendment four?
We've had a public hearing on the matter, and it's been closed. All right? 48A is before us. For the benefit of the members, we should clarify what 48A is, Mr. Clerk?
48A is a motion brought forward by Mr. Zine, seconded by Mr. Padilla, moved that the ordinance today, related to proposed agreement for coordinated street furniture program, be amended to require that the contractor shall remove any street furniture at the contractor's expense on request by the council when there has been a crime or health problem at the location in question, and when reasonable efforts to alleviate the problem at the location have not succeeded, and that a provision implementing this amendment be included in the contract.
All right, it's before us. Please open the roll on 48A. I'll close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, 48B then.
48B instructs the CLA to include-
Miskowski, Weiss, is that correct? Labange?
So that's Councilmember Miskowski, Labange, seconded. Instruct the chief legislator-
Instruct chief legislative analyst includes provisions in the contract to ensure that there's a coordinated review and analysis of the proposed street furniture amenities, advertising impacts, and other general impacts on the affected areas. The contractor shall submit to the council office of each affected area for approval proposed street furniture locations in historic preservation overlay zones, specific plan areas, scenic parkways, targeted neighborhood initiatives, pedestrian-oriented districts, transit-oriented districts, business improvement districts, and any other areas that may be designated by council as a complete package for each specially designated area. Two, prior to any submission of applications for permit approvals, the contractor shall be required to appear before any neighborhood council or other such community group as requested by the council member of the affected area to make presentations about the proposed street furniture locations and amenities. Three, a yearly review by the council and city attorney regarding the extent of the contractor's compliance with maintenance standards designated in the contract, so that if compliance is found to be insufficient, the council may consider appropriate remedial actions.
All righty. 48B is now before us. Open the roll on 48B. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Now, 48, as amended, is before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, as there is an ordinance involved, the ordinance will be held over for a second reading in one week, which would be the 21st.
You have a blank stare on the part of the city attorney. Is there a reason for that?
That just, I think the ordinance applies to just the trust fund portion, not to the contract. There is no ordinance required for the approval of the contract.
That's correct.
All right, as it applies to the trust fund alone, we'll have that second reading next week. Thank you very much. We shall then proceed to the next item before us.
Item number 49, called special.
Let the distinguished gentlemen from the New York City Council know that we appreciate this presence in the chambers, and we hope that you had a bit of deja vu here today. We'll be glad to, at your invitation. All right, we're on to the next item.
Item number 49. It's an item for its public hearing that has not been held.
Item number 49, we have one speaker card on that item. Mr. Tutte Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you no doubt know, the Brown Act requires that whenever you distribute agendas or other items to the members of the council, you must make them available for the public. 48 and 49 are stapled together and are not with the regular agenda. That agenda ends at 47. There are no copies in the back. The city clerk office and I discussed this matter. They pointed out that when we were across the street, the entire agenda was posted behind glass in the foyer leading to council chambers. Because I did not have the supplement or the arrangement, I didn't know there was a 48 or 49.
All right.
And for that reason, I submitted a card hoping that the chair would respect the fact that you have not properly notified the public as required by the Brown Act. Ten copies of the agenda take care of the first five rolls, first five views. It doesn't take care of the number of people that possibly enter the council chambers. For that reason, I would advocate you cooperate, city clerk, and once again put a billboard outside council chambers that shows the entire agenda so we don't have these problems anymore.
Thank you so much. All right, that closes the public hearing on the item before us, which is item number 49. And I think we have a member wishing to be heard on 49. All right, on 48, Mr. Clerk, we wish to have that go forth with. Now on 49.
Just a status report. This is an initiative being put together by Sheriff's Association, the Fire Fighters' Association statewide, and we've been attempting to obtain information. I wanted to kind of give you a status. It appears that it might result in some seventy, eighty million dollars of additional revenue for police and fire purposes. There are some concerns by our city and other cities relative to the maintenance effort considerations and protection of revenues, but quite frankly, the ability to get the most recent draft of it is somewhat difficult. We understand there is a tense draft. We cannot get a copy of it, so it's difficult to report. We would suggest you consider continuing this until Tuesday. It is difficult for some people who may have to vote on this in lead California cities, but I quite frankly don't have enough information to analyze it at this point. It does appear, however, to be, from a revenue standpoint, if it passes, whether it's our fair share or not is another question, but it will be in the neighborhood of seventy-five million dollars, which can be all bad.
All right. In light of the fact that the report is yet to be completed, the request has come to continue this item until next Tuesday, and we will proceed as requested. Mr. Clerk? There is a motion before us to continue this item to next Tuesday, made by Mr. Zine, seconded by Mrs. Hahn, and memorialized by Conrad. All right, that will be the order. Next item, sir.
Item number 50, called special, by Councilmember Hahn.
All right, Councilmember Hahn.
Fifty, already?
The representative of the fifteenth council district in the city of Los Angeles.
I'd like to have Representative for the City Attorney's Office, if we could, and Greg Nelson, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Just to briefly explain to the council the issues surrounding the three hundred thousand dollar transfer, and as you know, colleagues, this really, we actually talked about this in Wilmington briefly, and then we continued it to today's meeting. But again, the issues that I was concerned about was the forming neighborhood councils throughout the city have been really complaining loudly that there were not enough monies initially to help them with their outreach, to help them with their mailing, their copying, with all the work that really needs to be done to make sure that their outreach is reaching the widest number of people in their neighborhood. There was also a concern, which I would like the city attorney to address, in terms of reimbursement. And what I think I'm going to do after they report back to us is I will move that we do approve this transfer, but then have some of the remainder issues come back to my Committee on Education and Neighborhoods to sort out in terms of reimbursement. But why don't you speak to those issues?
Now, the city attorney, proceed.
Yes, thank you. Assistant City Attorney Quinn Coin Dexter. With respect to the reimbursement issue, the first thing I did basically between Wednesday and now is to evaluate whether this would implicate a gift of public fund issue, an issue that I heard came up earlier. And in my view, if we can identify the legislative public purpose for reimbursing forming neighborhood council groups, I think that it might be feasible to create some sort of reimbursement program with the caveat that I think we need to evaluate it from the city attorney's perspective, the city lawyer's office, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, the city clerk, to determine how, the parameters of that kind of program, to determine how much, what types of expenses we would want to identify that would be reimbursed, to actually evaluate the pros and cons of that kind of program. It's my understanding, which I just understood from today, that a similar program has been developed with the formation of various business improvement districts, where at least we've come up with some sort of programs to decide how these groups could form with monies to be used for that purpose. We might need to look at the equal protection ideas behind that because clearly wealthier communities might have the ability to come up with seed money rather than the less wealthy communities, and we need to evaluate the impact of the city creating that kind of reimbursement program with respect to those issues. So there are a lot of things that we would have to look at, but I think we can identify with the council's help, the committee's help, the public purpose that we would be implementing and accomplishing, but we need to really study with the input of different departments, how we would implement it and how we would create that kind of program.
All right, Mr. Nelson.
Greg Nelson, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. We'd be happy to join with the comptroller, city clerk, city attorney, other governmental agencies that can help us develop this creative approach, including an eye towards the cost effectiveness of how we could make a program like this work, and we will get back with you quickly.
All right, Ms. Hahn?
Yes, Mr. Nelson, I just want you to reassure us that this three hundred thousand that will be transferred now will, in some way, whether it's directed to the access centers or not, will be used to help the neighborhood councils in their formation months.
Yes, very briefly, as you know from your own committee meetings, as we know from every community meeting that we've had, one of the messages that we hear consistently, loudly, and clearly is we need more help with that part of our outreach that involves printing material and mailing some of that printing material. So the money goes into the fund that we've already been working with to provide printing and postage.
Colleagues, here's what I'd like. I would like us to approve this three hundred thousand dollar transfer that can be used immediately to help fund these new access centers so that the forming neighborhood councils all over the city will, do have access to stamps and copying and phones and computers and whatever it is they're needing right now, but that we send back to my committee this whole issue of identifying, you know, the public purpose of neighborhood councils, whether or not we can make gift of public funds directly to the neighborhood councils while they're forming, and the issue of reimbursement to the, particularly to the two that just got certified on Wednesday, who actually use their own money to get where they are today. So I would like to have that piece of this sent back to my committee.
All right. I've been apprised that we have lost a quorum at this point, unless someone is just standing on the periphery and has not notified us of the intent to return. Sergeant, might you be of assistance in this connection, or have we exhausted our capacity to endure for today? All right. We can memorialize this by a formal motion to adjourn or essentially recognize that we are adjourned ipso facto. Shall we rise for adjourning motions? Are there any adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to request that we adjourn our meeting today in honor of memory of Miss Mary Ruby Shepherd, a longtime resident and leader in the community of Watts. She was born in Louisiana in 1910, and Mary and her late husband Morris moved to Los Angeles in 1944 and bought a home in Watts the following year. Together, they ran a property management company and raised their children. Mary loved all races of people, particularly young people, and devoted her time and energy to serving her community. She co-founded the Young People of Watts and the Young People of Linwood. Each year, she cooked over twenty turkeys to feed the community. She was president of the Hundred and Eleventh Street Block Club and a member of the March of Dimes, the Red Cross, and American Cancer Society. Mary also worked every year at the voting polls at Grape Street Elementary School. And Mary's sixty years of service earned her recognition from a local private elementary school who named it the Mary R. Shepherd Christian Center in her honor. She is survived by her daughter Geraldine, her son Rodney, four grandchildren, and eight great-grandchildren. I ask that we honor this great memory of this great lady this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
President, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of George Melvin, known as also Mel Powell. Born in Atlanta, Georgia in 1935, he's the sixth child of Willie Mae Corinne Powell. Mr. Powell was the owner and proprietor of the famous Mel Fish Market right there on Jefferson for a number of years. He spent his last twenty years living and expanding his vision in the community. So his funeral service is going to be Saturday, 15th, 1:00 p.m. He's survived by his wife Carolyn David Powell, his two daughters, Melvia Jane Harris and Jorgette Malia Powell, and his only son, George Melvin Powell Jr. Also survived by his brothers, five of them, four sisters, three grandchildren, as well as a host of nieces and nephews. Certainly, he's going to be missed. Fish was always good there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. I first ask that my colleagues join me in adjourning in memory of Thomas Tannenbaum. Mr. Tannenbaum was an extraordinarily successful pioneer in the television industry. He started decades ago when that industry was in its infancy, and through his very successful career, he left his mark on shows that left their mark on our society, such as The Odd Couple, The Brady Bunch, Mission Impossible, Love American Style, Nancy Drew, Kojak, and the list goes on and on. It's an extraordinary record of achievement that people in that industry today rarely have the chance to equal, although Mr. Tannenbaum's children have gone on to succeed him in the industry and have done extraordinarily well. He will be missed. I'd also ask that we adjourn in memory of George Conheim, a very well-known individual in Southern California, a very successful individual, but perhaps best remembered for his philanthropic work, including his key work with the Vista Del Mar Child and Family Services Center in my district, which is a one-of-a-kind place. And I just want to read you a quote from Vista Del Mar President Jerry Zaslaw, who noted that Mr. Conheim led the board of directors in a philosophy that no child would ever be turned away because of their inability to pay for their treatment or care. That's the guiding principle of Vista Del Mar. Mr. Conheim was involved in numerous other charities and civic activities, and he will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. I would like to be a seconder on Mr. Conheim. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, request we adjourn in honor of Barbara Wheeler. Passed away December 5th, 2001. Barbara passed away after a long bout with cervical cancer. She leaves her husband Gary and daughter Caitlin. Gary is a member of the Los Angeles Police Department assigned to Valley Traffic Division. Been requested by Councilmember Padilla, request adjourned in memory of Jaron Lemus. Passed away December 7th. Jaron was born in Los Angeles on December 29th, 1987. He was an eighth grader at Pacoima Middle School, known as a sharp, witty person with a unique, classic sense of humor. He was a person who was always in good mood, and he made everyone around him happy with his jokes. Mrs. Kim, his teacher, had this to say about Jaron. Courage and strength are the abilities to greet a new day with hope and honor when yesterday was unkind. He had the courage and strength of character. He was a responsible young man and helped his mother in any way possible. Jaron aspired to be a doctor, and he had the will to achieve. God bless him and may he rest in peace. He is survived by his mother Rosalind, Father Caesar, and brothers Jonathan, Wilmer, Douglas, and Ronald.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. The council having lost a quorum, the council is adjourned.